Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 19th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room and now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a quick housekeeping note, because we have some ill consultants and because this is a reconsideration of a matter taken, of a vote taken earlier, we changed the agenda up to put Hyde Park Town Center North, Ready Coffee first. At our last meeting, county planning required a supermajority, which would mean five votes. I'm sorry, come on up, guys, which would require five votes. The motion did not pass because it only received four votes. There is case law indicating that when a board makes a decision or does not reach a supermajority, it has 62 days must lapse before it becomes a final action. Therefore, based on case law, we don't consider that the original decision, the vote, to be a final action. The three of us who voted no that night still stand by our decision because it was a safety issue. However, in the interim, our traffic engineer and the applicant's traffic engineer have worked together to come up with a modification to the original June, the last June plans, just in one section that dealt with some parking spaces. To note, they're proposing the addition of a new curbed island to better channelize the traffic, also a speed hump, and to relocate three remaining spaces, center them, et cetera. This would necessitate a change to the plans overall set because it will have to go through the landscaping areas, et cetera. So we're here tonight to reconsider a decision. We're going to, I'm going to introduce a resolution that will allow us to take, to add new conditions based, to add a condition based on the changes. Anybody have any questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
I have, I do have one quick thing.
Yes.
Kelly, I was just looking at this Exhibit A. Joe didn't do anything with the curb line to incorporate the catch basin.
Yeah, we're going to make that, we'll make that change as one of the conditions.
Do you want that added to, a full condition?
Yeah, because I emailed it and I thought it was going to be done, but, I mean, it's not a big deal, just add it as a condition.
Well, Pete, one of the conditions is that the whole site plan set is going to be revised to be consistent with Exhibit A.
Okay, so we could catch it then?
Yeah.
That's fine, that's fine, okay.
Okay, so then let's make the condition how you want to word it. Number 11?
So it should be, let me see, north.
Just add that, that the drainage is going to be.
Should be the north, northwest curb line of the three parking spaces should be shifted to encompass the existing drainage basin.
So revision of the site plan set so that the northwest curb line of the parking spaces is shifted to accommodate the drainage.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I mean, it's not much, it's.
No, he actually, he had done it.
A couple feet.
But we didn't amend the plan.
It shifted to.
Complain drainage.
Encompass the existing drainage basin.
No.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So if it's, if Exhibit A is the final one, I was looking at something online and it showed those three spaces actually shifted, I thought, further east. This one is kind of showing them still centered.
The sidewalk.
So the one I, they had online that was, that said updated July 17th actually went like right to the curb, right to the, right to the dumpster almost, so can we make sure that?
Yeah, I think the suggestion from the traffic consultant, from the town's traffic consultant, is that occur. And we had forwarded those just as a sounding board to see if that was what they were desiring and all of those changes that are on the plan, that was a, you know, just a conceptual for review, will be incorporated into the final plan set, so you're correct.
And a quick answer, a quick answer, the reason why this was kept the way it is, twofold. One, our traffic consultant, Mr. Fitzgerald, wanted the drivers who are exiting here to hit the speed bump quickly, which is why the speed hump is there, and they were worried about taking up the sidewalk here if they moved it too far east.
Correct.
Yes.
Think that was.
I think, I think at the end of the day, the plan that you see as Exhibit A is the plan that your traffic consultant.
Okay.
And so I think that's for purposes of tonight's meeting, that was why.
This was sent by Mr. Fitzgerald to us.
Correct. And that's his, I think that's his writing or someone's writing in the town side Exhibit A. So this is what the, your consultant approved.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what we're calling as the, the final.
This is, yeah, this is what he's desiring that we.
In other words, the June plans will be amended, just like any, just like any conditions that we make, the conditions will be changed on the June plans that we're approving the original plans.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Because I know this is complicated. Resolution to grant conditional site plan approval, Ready Coffee, July 19, 2023, Resolution 2021-15A amended. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby waives the requirement for a six-foot sidewalk for the utility path proposed new building to the dumpster as it is an interior sidewalk which is intended to be used by staff in the compliant pathways provided elsewhere on the project site. And be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan set authorized as the chair or is authorized designate to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. First, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, approval by Dutchess County Department of Behavior and Community Health for the methods of wastewater supply and water, excuse me, water supply and waste by our disposal. Three, approval of the site plan set by TEG Credit Union as evidenced by an authorized representative of TEG Credit Union signing the site plan set. Four, approval by attorney to the planning board of a cross-access easement with TEG Credit Union and accreditation of the same with the Dutchess County Clerk. Five, revision of each sheet of the site plan set to be consistent with Exhibit A, including but not limited to the installation of a speed hump, channelization, and the elimination of one parking space. Six, revision of Note 6 on Sheet T-1 to read as follows. This site plan is for a drive-through, serving beverages and commercially prepackaged items including snacks, food, and grab-and-go items or items that require no or minimal assembly, but no cooking at the time of the customer order. Made-to-order food or meals or meals cooked on premises at the time of the order are not proposed nor permitted as part of this approval and would require a site plan amendment. Seven, revision of Sheet T-1 to include a Note 7 to read as follows. Any changes to the use, function, or appearance of the building should require a site plan amendment. Eight, revision of the site plan set to include a note that Kelvin values will not exceed 3,000 K. Nine, revision of the site plan set to include a note that light pole bases will be painted black. Ten, revision of Sheet AP-1 to note the opaque glass will be light gray in appearance. Eleven, revision of the site plan set so the northwest curb line of the three proposed parking spaces is shifted to encompass the existing drainage basin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say, oh, excuse me.
Voice vote.
Individual voice vote.
That's right. Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Ms. Wasser?
Yes.
Mr. Veeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oliver?
Yes.
And Mr. Gerschow is absent. Vice Chair Dexter?
Aye.
And Chairman Dupree?
Aye. And next, we had a request from the applicant for something, so I get a motion to go into attorney-client session. You guys won't know about this, we'll leave it in there. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Excuse us, audience, we'll be right back.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I feel like an expert on playing.
Looks like he's all right here. 4%.
Thank you all for your patience. As always, in executive session, no decisions are made, no votes are taken. Make a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Winnicke Land Trust lot line alteration. Applicants are seeking approval, in essence, to alter the lines between two large lots creating different lots. And this has been discussed in workshop quite a bit, mostly with technical issues, so make a motion, open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any comments from the consultants?
No. You know, we added that one, that one note about, you know, the DPW as a condition, so.
Perfect.
I think we're all set.
Tad? Ms. Franson?
No, I think, I think we're good. I think we.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
I think the density has been assigned and it's fine.
Yeah, you guys did a good job. I know we had, as I said initially, some technical issues, but you kept responding beautifully, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the board or questions?
No.
No.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we have a resolution prepared for approval.
I have that. Resolution to grant final subdivision approval for Winnicke line alteration. Resolution number 2023-19A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants final subdivision approval to the subdivision plot and authorizes the chair or is authorized designate to sign the subdivision plot after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, permission to file from the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. Three, signing of the subdivision plot by the Town and Clinton Planning Board Chair or authorized designate. Four, revision of the subdivision plot to include the following note. Future use of the driveway to parcel B may require a permit from the Dutchess County Department of Public Works. Before the driveway is open for any use, it is landowners' responsibility to contact the Dutchess County Department of Public Works to determine if a permit and/or any improvements are required. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? Motion carries. Gentlemen, congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is another new public hearing for East Park Deli and Grocery. The applicant is seeking approval, but actually has already received approval for an exterior modification. He's requested an extension of the time to start and complete construction. The app, the request was received timely. Anybody have any questions?
No.
No.
Make a motion, open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we have a resolution prepared?
Resolution to grant an extension of time to commence construction, East Park Deli and Grocery, dated May 3, 2023. Resolution 2022-07B. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the application, the applicant one-year extension of time to commence substantial completion of the project as shown on the approved site plan to July 18, 2024, and to complete construction by July 18, 2024.
Second.
Yep.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. This is for Bella Field, planning a development Phase II subdivision. As a reminder, we're also going to be looking at the next phase here, and if the subdivision is tied to the site plan that's for this phase, the applicants have now kind of determined what the number of lots it is finally going to be, based on the Phase II-A site plan. Let me. Make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Larry? All yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board. We're, we're making progress. Jared's to my left. Jared O'Connor's been a big help, and I'm going to be bringing him with me when I come here, so he'll help me out.
Cynthia's been referring to Jared and I kept saying, finally, who's Jared? She said Jared O'Connor. You're mad at him? I'm like, no, so nice to meet you, Mr. O'Connor.
Yeah, okay. Big help to us, so he's there every day with me, so any, any tours, we'd be happy to take you out. Okay, so we submitted this two, two weeks ago. It's prepared by LaBella. And this, what I did here was to color code it to make it a little bit easier to see, but currently we have three lots, the sponsor's lot, T-Rex owner, T-Rex Shaner, and then the wastewater treatment plant. Jared, can you zoom in? Is that possible? I guess not. Yeah, up there, see the, see the glass? To the left, 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 back and. Oh, the service. All right, so the, the reddish boxes are the existing lots. The hotel is to the right or the south. The wastewater treatment plant is to the north. There you go. And then the, the, we're going from a three-lot subdivision to, we're adding four, so we're going to a seven-lot subdivision. So the next page will show the detail of it. So again, the red there is the hotel lot. The, the yellow is lots four and five. Let me grab this thing. Yeah, so this is lot five, this is lot six, these are the townhouse lots. This, I shaded it in purple, but this is lot four. Lot four will be the master HOA. This again is another lot, so that's four, five, six, and lot seven. The hotel is lot, lot three. Sponsor's lot is lot one, and the wastewater treatment plant's lot, lot three, so. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There's easements that we put on here, so there's an easement going through the hotel lot for sewer, and it goes up to the two, two townhouse lots. There's already an easement on the water line which comes up to here. We extended the easement on the water line up to the main street, and then it runs all the way down, and then connects down here. The master HOA lot, or lot four, all, all the adjoining parcels to it will be members to the HOA lot, which means it has access. So that's pretty straightforward.
So as a reminder to the board and to anybody in the audience, we'd accepted sketch, an initial sketch plan for this, but then the applicants indicated they were going to be changing some things, and so we will need to reapprove sketch based on the latest layout. But before we can do that, actually, I think there's a zoning chart, there's a zoning table that's still under construction or something?
The zoning table should, should be on the first page.
Wasn't there something that still was, we were waiting for information?
Oh, okay, okay.
That just, in other words, I think that there's, I'll have to look, but I thought that there, on the plan set, I thought that there was an inset that there's no information on?
Yes.
It says "vault table in process."
Vault table, that's what I mean, so we need to have that completed.
Okay, I will do that.
Then we can accept for sketch at the next meeting. So let me start with questions or comments from consultants. Ms. Franson? None? Mr. Dara?
I don't have any yeses.
Tad?
I just want to clarify that the road, the internal road is part of the HOA parcel, is that correct?
We can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, is, is the road part of the HOA parcel?
Is the road part of the HOA parcel?
It is, it is. So, yes, it is. So the HOA is here, the road zips up here and around.
Okay.
Yes.
It has to be because these are private roads, as a group.
I know.
And that's how we get access.
Sorry. Let me start to my right. Any comments, Mr. Oliver?
Not at this time, thank you.
Ms. Dexter?
Glad to see progress.
Yep.
Ms. Wasser?
No comment.
Mr. Waters?
Not at this time.
Mr. Veeth?
No comment.
I don't really have any comments either. I'm glad to see this has been worked out now that you have your, your site plan layout. So with, are there any comments from the public about this application? So why don't we adjourn this to August 2nd? Make a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And this way you can complete the missing information. We'll put you on, you're on back end for the second, and that way we can then have a resolution prepared to accept for sketch. Get this going. I believe since you're going to be coming back in a few moments, we had a few, but you're going to be coming back to show us the plan that you've produced for the site plan. I think though this works is we would need to have this approved, and then a condition can be made when we, when we consider approval of the site plan, that would be predicated, there would be a condition based on you filing the subdivision with, just proof of accreditation with county clerk. Okay, because that way we can then approve.
Yep.
Okay.
Same as, same as last time.
Great. Then, Tad, did we give it to you?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did, thank you. Okay, then we'll see in a little bit.
Yep, thanks.
Next item on the agenda, Carriage Trails, AKA Crofton Muse. Make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So, welcome back, Mr. Kaufman. I'm not going to go into the long history of this project, except to say that, that it, when it was initially proposed and approved, it exceeds the term of anybody up here, including Mr. Veeth on his original time, although he did work on this. So what the request right now is, is to extend the deadlines for construction to start. We've been working assiduously with the applicant to move this forward. He in turn, or they in turn, have been working with DOT now, DEC, to make sure that we can get some permits back up and running. DEC did write us recently if we could reaffirm Seeker. We're still not, I think, positive about how to proceed on that, but I think we're getting there. We have some materials from Mr. Kaufman that provides the lengthy review that I wasn't going to talk about all night because it's all in here.
Very lengthy, right.
The real question is, is, we've been reaffirming Seeker, but in this case, we do have new information based on their delineating the wetlands and sending those to the DEC for confirmation. Because essentially what the DEC said is, is that while those wetlands, when they change, they've also now added prime nesting for blending turtles, which is a protected species. So we're trying to just figure out how to incorporate that new information because everything else under Seeker, with what we've seen under the newest revision, based on that, would have lower impacts, lower impacts to traffic, noise, you name it, because you'd be reducing the density. However, in the midst of showing us that plan, it's been concluded by Ms. Moss, as the administrator, that if we just look at that anew, it would require a site plan amendment, you'd have to come in under the new code, lose even more density. So what I'd like to do is see if we can sort of noodle through a path forward for when we want to adjourn this to, so we can then figure out the Seeker thing. We first discussed maybe a scoping, or to do a supplemental, maybe it could be an expanded EAF section instead. We'll just think about this. And I apologize that we haven't come to a conclusion, but we had some other projects you might have heard, they're keeping us busy. So let me give a vote first to Ms. Franson. Bonnie?
So I think the only area of concern with regard to, especially with regard to supplementation, was the wastewater treatment plant and what the gallons per day would be. Because if you were showing the excess capacity, then it begged the question, is there more development? And that kind of opens the Seeker can of worms. So have you sort of thought through in terms of what you're seeking for the wastewater treatment plant? I'm trying to remember some of the conversations with Victoria as well, in terms of her concerns.
Yeah, so let me address some of the issues that we presented. First of all, let's go.
We need, we need the microphone closer.
Okay. The wastewater treatment plant will have a capacity of 44,000 gallons, which is the, which we would utilize under the current plan, which is reduced from the original speedies permit of 66,000 because that was a larger development. So now we have the smaller development, and that's what we're building. The plant that we have purchased has the capability of being a larger capacity, should we develop further, or should someone else want to hook into our project? In which case that would open up a whole other can of worms with Sewer Transportation Corp., so we're not going to go there. So, but our position is that if the DEC, because the concern is, will DEC issue a speedies discharge permit for a larger capacity than what the current project is?
Right.
And if they will, I don't think that that materially affects how you people act. That's a DEC permit. However, if the DEC says, no, we will own, you know, we need to know what the purposes are for anything for a larger discharge permit, then we will abandon that amount and then go to 44,000 and not complicate the issue. But I believe there's a possibility that they will consider giving us a permit so that in the future, should anybody, including ourselves, want to use that sewer treatment plant and would have to have it expanded, the equipment would have to be expanded, and the permit for the larger capacity would be in place. And in this case, the number we picked was based upon maximum capacity, density, under the current zoning for the vacant lot, which we are not intending to develop at this time. So there's a lot of ifs in there, because God knows, we've already experienced, you know, zone changes on the lot we're developing, and so it's, it's too much brain damage. If we, if we can, if they will allow, give us a larger speedies permit, I think that's, should be okay with the town, and if anybody objects, we will just go to.
We're not trying, wait, so we're not trying to restrict the size of the water treatment, wastewater treatment facility, but the only time in 17 years, only time that I've seen the DEC, and they had strenuous objections even as they did it, to give a permit that would have a larger capacity than what's approved, was Bella Field. And we did Seeker on the entire site. We have, that was the final, the constant development plan. Which, if we do Seeker and say we're reaffirming everything, and that includes looking at the total number of dwelling units, and the DEC comes back and says, what's the difference? Then that makes us look bad too, because it's, we're, oh, well, we approved this, but we didn't ask for any additional density. So that's why we've been wrapping our heads around this as well, because, go ahead, Bonnie.
Right, so I think that's why the planning board has to understand your position, because if your desire is really to have the 66,000 GPD or thereabouts speedies permit, then the path through Seeker may be different than if it's just what's required for the development as it is now constituted. So again, it's, it's a Victoria input, but we just have to get to what you want to do and then to figure out what that secret path is.
Let me give you this explanation.
I don't think you wanted to get to the 66, that's the original.
Yeah, let me, let me give you an explanation. The effort involved in getting any permit from anybody in this development is so difficult that we thought, let's at least try to get one, one little itty-bitty permit for the possibility, the nonexistent at this time possibility, that there may be a future use for the, for the sewer treatment plant. If that's something that's slowing down the process for the approval or the agreement that the Seeker findings really do incorporate the current development, I will abandon that request. I, it was disclosed to DEC why we have the amount, it's right there in our engineer's report. They never challenged it.
No, but that's.
And they know that we have.
Actually, when they received your report, that's when they wrote us saying, you've got to redo Seeker. They didn't challenge it.
They didn't say we have to redo Seeker.
They're asking for a new Seeker determination. That would be, not redo, a new determination, that would be.
What they asked for is to confirm that the current Seeker will encompass the current, that the Seeker exists.
When you're saying current, wait, the current Seeker was done on, on the currently approved plan. You proposed a new plan. I believe that's what they're asking us to do Seeker on. That's the one that incorporates the removal of the dwelling units.
It's, it's almost like a mitigation plan.
Yes.
Right? So right now, everything almost doesn't, it fits within the findings from the perspective of it would be a mitigation plan. There were turtles and turtle nesting habitat, and the reduction and the changes all relate to the mitigation for that habitat.
And that's why we were trying to redo Seeker, so redo it, to incorporate this mitigation plan in there.
So, but holding on then to the 66,000?
44,000.
Well, the, I think, I thought-
Forty-four is for the currently approved plan that we're trying to extend, but that has the additional dwelling units in the northeast corner that they're removing.
So the speedies permit, though, I thought the speedies permit for the entire development was six, around 66, or is it around 44?
Forty-four right now.
The original was 66, but-
Originally.
Way back original.
With 300 units.
So is your speedies permit for 66?
Originally.
And what are you, what are you asking, what are you asking for now?
Forty-four thousand.
Okay.
Would be necessary to service this-
The 44,000 still has excess capacity, is what I'm trying to say. The 66,000 was achieved back long before he owned it.
Right.
The original applicants.
Correct.
During that time, we've had two different reductions of density.
Correct.
When that happened, the applicants back then, Sarkar-
Sarkar.
Sarkar, went back and amended their speedies permit, so they were, the speedies permit got dropped every time. So, when Mr. Kaufman purchased it, it was 44,000. Now, the DEC is requiring them to reduce even further density, so-
So then it's less than 44,000?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm-
No, 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 no. When we bought it, it was 66,000 GPD, and it was based on 317 units. However, when we did the wetland survey, as was requested by the board-
I'm sorry, then the 44 is serviced?
The 44 is what we would need right now.
Right.
And you're asking for 44, you're asking for the increase?
Well, we're asking for 66, upon the possibility that we might develop something in the future. And in fact, our plant, we purchased one that could be expanded in the future. So, this is, but, we're in no position to describe what we would use it for now, and we don't need anything more than 44,000. So, if DEC says, we won't give you a speedies permit for more than what you need right now, unless you tell me why you need it, well, that's an easy answer. Please give us 44,000 speedies permit.
So then we have the chicken and the egg.
Well, so, then-
If you find out from the DEC that they're not going to do it, then we wouldn't have to do Seeker on that additional increase.
Right.
If you have to do Seeker on that additional increase, then I would probably withdraw it.
The only time that we've done Seeker were to permit, again, more than what's, to permit excess capacity-
Now, this is a DEC permit, though, so if they're okay with it, why shouldn't you?
That's why I asked you to go to the DEC first and find out if they'll give it to you.
Oh, I'm there!
And what have they said?
But there's this coordination that has to go on.
Here's what they said about Seeker. Let me read it to you, because I'm not quite sure the characterization is accurate. Okay. "Complete application for a permit requires either a Seeker negative deck or a draft environmental impact statement. This town of High Park Board was designated lead agency for the Seeker process for the previous proposal, and the town issued a neg deck. However, it is not clear that the current proposal is covered by this prior review. While there was a preliminary verbal indication that the issued finding statement would cover the current proposal, no written decision has been provided. Accordingly, by copy of this letter, the DEC requests that the town, as lead agency, make a written determination on whether the current proposal is covered by the 2003 Seeker process, and on whether a supplemental review is necessary." So what I'm here to say, and what I had provided all this information to you, and-
If we're given neg deck, then we can't get the mitigation in there for the Blending's turtles. Do you understand that?
Well, I understand that, except, well, actually, no, I don't understand that, because in your previous resolution, that granted this current, this current extension, it said we were going to mitigate the turtle. And in fact, you said we can incorporate whatever additional work they want in that portion of the resolution.
I'm still saying that. What I'm saying, though, is that we need to figure out, we need to make written findings as to why you're incorporating the mitigation plan. That's why we have to reopen Seeker. It's not just a simple reaffirmation.
Right, but-
That's all I'm saying.
But the reopening has two paths. One path would be, everything is reduced, or everything is sized and scaled for the project as it exists today, with the mitigations. The other issue is that you still have a treatment plant that can accommodate more capacity than what this development now consists of, and so that's the new aspect of this.
We could put that into a finding statement, that we find that there's excess capacity or something like that, it's part of our Seeker, if we have to do a Seeker, if we have to do findings, that may send up a red bell for the DEC, and I don't want that to happen either for the project.
I think it would be easier if DEC was very definitive in terms of, are they going to just, are they going to permit you 44 or the 66? Because we seem to be going round and round, and this is going to be a moot point, if they're not even going to give you 66.
But if I had a 66,000 Seeker, uh, speedies permit, and they give me a 66,000 gallon per day speedies permit, how does that negatively impact this project? I don't understand that.
It's not that it negatively impacts it, it's that you now have excess capacity, and what would be done with that excess capacity is not evaluated. So there has to be some consideration of that, from a Seeker perspective, from an environmental perspective.
Okay, so, so let me address-
Let me just say, so, I mean, I don't want this to sound like advocating for the applicant, but maybe, maybe like it's gonna, but, I mean, they do have to come back for site plan approval on another vacant parcel for whatever that they're going to do, right?
Yeah. I guess what I'm trying to say is, is I don't know how we do Seeker-
Okay.
-when they have additional capacity, because otherwise, it's segmentation when you come back with a site plan and say, oh, now I'm going to go ahead and do the 20, whatever number of dwelling units there are, attach to that. I think that's impermissible segmentation. Maybe I'm wrong, that's why we don't have our attorney here tonight.
How is, how is leaving a parcel vacant, which it was and is?
Wait, Lou, Lou, I'm not arguing that, I'm not saying that it's going to cause problems. I'm trying to protect this so that there's no lawsuit. I have to protect the town-
From whom? From whom? I'm not going to sue if you do that. You're not going to sue yourselves, and there's never been objection.
Lou, calm down, calm down, calm down again.
Okay.
It's easier if you drop the 22,000 extra capacity, but if you want to keep it, we'll keep it, and we'll figure out how to do Seeker on it.
If I have to, I said I would.
No, no, we will figure out how to do Seeker on it. What I'm telling you is that right now, I don't know how to do Seeker on it. I need more advice from the attorney.
Right, and it's going to require, I believe, the attorney will likely say that we're going to have to study that excess capacity in some way that hasn't been examined.
And how would you study the excess capacity, if I don't know what it's going to be used for?
Well, sewer plants are expandable, so if you're at 44,000, and you want 66, it shouldn't be a problem, because like Pete said, it's going to go before site plan approval for the other lots. So, there shouldn't be a problem. I don't-
You mean, if I go for a future expansion of the permit?
Well, and you're not going to build- You would have a speedies permit at that time.
And you're not going to, so, let's just, so if, if the DEC gave you the permit for the 66, you're only going to build, and the health department will only give you approval to build a plant for 44.
Correct.
And like Don says, depending on what happens with this vacant lot, and I understand about, how do you figure it out about Seeker, that's, that's like a definite thing, that has to be figured out. But, you know, you're not going to build the plant to handle 66, because-
No, we're not.
Because you don't have 66, then you're going to have to feed the plant, it's not going to work right.
We'd just have to add tanks, and, you know, some blowers, things like that, technical stuff.
Later.
And that would be later. So, let me suggest that my effort to expedite or alleviate the additional effort to get additional gallonage, I don't care. I don't, I just, like, all I need right now is this speedies permit for 44,000, in order to, and if that's going to complicate this entire process, then please, I will adjust it with these-
And Lou, I'm not sure it's possible to complicate this process anymore, but I think that would.
Right, okay.
It's complicated enough.
You don't want to overbuild it.
I stayed up late into the night to figure out how to, once again, put a bigger effort on my shoulders, yeah.
This way, all we have to do is just deal with the mitigation plan for Blending's, that's it.
I think everything you did was of great value, and I think it makes the path easier at that, and what we, what triggered all of this is just the excess capacity.
Okay, so, let's un-trigger it, let me take the, take the, uncock it, and we'll just, I'll, I'll deal with that. I will go to them, and they will take their another few months to digest, oh, you only need 44,000. Okay, well, we're going to take a look at that, and we'll talk to you in the fall, but if it's going to slow the process down with you, then I will just take my lumps.
Here's a suggestion I could make. Mr. Boudreaux over there can tell you, that once the DEC wrapped their head around giving a speedies permit that was for maximum build-out, they at first, that said, as part of the approval, you must give us fully engineered plans for the entire full build-out. Ask Larry.
I can't do that.
Ultimately, that got worked through.
I can't, I can't do that, nor would I-
Ultimately, that got worked through, but that's how, that's how precise the DEC was about that additional capacity. They finally accepted that if we did Seeker on the overall broad one, that was okay. But that took four months, five months of negotiation?
So, in my defense-
We don't want you to spend that time.
In my defense, all I gave you in the additional information I just distributed to you, was the latest NOIA, Notice of Inadequacy, you know, whatever it stands for.
And complete application.
Yeah, they, thank you. You know, acronyms are starting to escape. And, in that, I assume that they listed everything that was still deficient, and if I fix that, I get my permits. And nowhere in that was there something about the 66,000 gallons versus 44,000. But, it, it seems like we're really getting stuck on that, and as I said, I was trying to make my path in the future easier. I'd much rather make my path in the car, path in the current easier. So if that's what it takes, that's acceptable, not a problem. I would just like to point out a couple of things, though, because I know you made a recommendation, and I thank you for, you know, the effort, just in thinking, you know, about, we're going to need an SEIS, and, you know, and I, and I started-
That's what I'm thinking about, Expanded Environmental Assessment Form, because it's really a full-
The SEIS had, was more being triggered by the additional capacity. Once you start, that everything's scaled now to your project as it is, then I think that it makes it a lot easier, and I don't know that an SEIS is triggered.
Great. So, couple of things, though. Tad had, and she can easily correct me if I'm wrong, the problem that was her biggest concern, and where she felt this was a, not a minor change, but it was a substantial change, was because we were going to keep the bridge private, and therefore that said, then the town road man said, well, then I don't want the road, and now the road was private, and then we got into all these things that, well, wait a minute, now we have a lot that's on a, not on a public road, and, and so he said, that's a major change, and that's a problem. Now I've eliminated that. We're going to build a bridge, as was originally approved, of course, it's being looked at right now by-
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, so, I don't know that we still have the problem that Tad recognized originally.
We'll look at that again.
I was going to say, let's revisit that thing.
The second thing-
No, no, you made a very good point there, Lou.
Okay. The second thing is, that in terms of reducing buildings and units and all that, you've already done that on this project, 1696 DD, already did, knocked out eight buildings, so this, you know, so doing it again, I would hope you would see your way clear to do that, being that it's even on this project.
Mr. Kaufman, you're going to get that. I'm trying to incorporate your mitigation plan, that's all.
Okay.
Without you making a new project. In other words, we want to keep your approval as it is, and then incorporate that, so then you could just keep going.
Right.
Right? I think that's how we're looking at this.
Right, okay, and, well, and to that end, I don't think that having open space and nesting areas, that to satisfy the new obligations DEC has put on projects that are within the Blending's turtle area-
Corridor.
Creates a negative impact to this project. I think it opens up space, and the, you know, so I think that all of the issues that are involved in your consideration of what we are proposing now, of the current project, would, I think, are all within the old findings. I mean, it's a smaller project, but it's the same project, only less-
The old findings did not incorporate the new mitigation plan, that's all. I'm not sure why we're not, why we're arguing over this, or caviling over it, because we have to incorporate that in order for it to stay with the existing approval, that's all. And it's new information. You had wetlands redelineated, and DEC got their information, that's why they're requiring it. It's not a negative impact, I agree with you, it's a positive impact. It's a negative impact on your bottom line, because you don't get all the housing. But I just want to incorporate that new section so that it becomes part of the original approval that we're extending. That's all. And if Tad makes a new determination, that because the road is now proposed as public again-
We'll look at it.
So, first-
So, so I would, so there's a very large development down in Tuxedo that's been going on for decades. And every time a change occurs, they look at it from a tech memo, a tech memo was provided, similar to what you did, where they compare-
Tuxedo Farms?
Hmm?
Tuxedo Farms?
Yes, yes. So, they look at it, and they'll say, all right, are the impacts more or less? So they do the tech memo, and then if it turns out that there aren't any new substantial adverse impacts, they just reissue, reissue an amended finding statement.
Which we could do here, I think.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay.
I was going to walk that over to you tonight.
I know, well-
Yeah, you know, you, in fact, you are the traffic and the planner, traffic consultant and the planner.
Correct.
You personally?
No, no, the firm.
I don't know, but the firm, right. And in that, I mean, pages upon pages of whereas's, and then it comes to the determination, well, it's really not a negative impact, and therefore, we're going to amend the findings.
And I, I said earlier, all your impacts are reduced, so there are no new negative impacts. I mean, everything is, and the potential negative impact of keeping that housing has been mitigated by this new plan.
Right.
So, we're just trying to figure out how to get that portion of the plan as part of this, and so, because I said we could incorporate that, once we do Seeker, that's what we could do, is just, again, not produce brand-new plans, but just kind of add those sheets into the existing signed-approved plan, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Just be aware with that particular project, they had many additional studies that had to be done to get to an amending finding statements, because they were making changes. Yours is far more straightforward, you're getting rid of units, and it really is just reflecting what the changes are.
And the studies that have already been done on the original findings. So, in conclusion, I will work on just eliminating this, a thorn about the additional potential for expansion in the future. I'll get that out of the way, and I have provided you with some basic information, and from that, if, if, you know, if the consultant should say, you know what, if I, I see a lot, you know, because I gave you the two plans, the old and the new, just so you'd see, oh, this is almost identical, except this little corner is empty now, you know, except for turtles. And, so, I think that might have, I'm hoping that's kind of gelled in your head exactly that the plans are not that vastly different, and you'll let me know if I need to just-
So I've been trying to say, if we extend the plans as they are right now, the DEC is not going to be happy with you, because they show all that housing. I'm trying to incorporate the newest version you have into the old plan set. That's the purpose of all this. And we're trying to work with you, I promise. And to do that, I need to say we had to amend the current plan for this, and the reason why is because DEC has required this. One of the conditions we made on the extension each time was that we would reevaluate or redo the mitigated measures proposed by the DEC. In this case, they'd ask you to redo it more extensively. So we just have to make a finding statement as to why now the newest plan stays within the current one that keeps getting extended. That's basically it. So I think what we should do is adjourn this maybe to the 16th of August, to give ourselves like more time to, but we'll have to work with Victoria.
Yeah, I think if the attorney's in agreement of what the path should be, then the actual finding statement, the amended one, needs to get drafted.
Right, and that's going to be for us, from us, because it's our finding statement to adopt.
Right.
So we get started working on that as well. Peter?
We should probably, you know, at some point, I think it'd be helpful to have a call with the applicant, you know, and once, once we get a handle on, you know, this issue, because there are some other things. Lou, Lou's been dealing with Tad and I on floodplain, you know, development permit, so maybe get, you know, I think we know where we're going on that, but maybe we could clear that up, so we could kind of try to pull all-
More information.
Try to pull all these issues like together. Have you heard back from the DOT yet?
No, and I wrote them again today. I was hoping maybe when you guys had your meeting with them, that they might have tipped their hand in, but-
Well, they were gonna get back to you-
Yeah.
-after our call.
I heard that one. I know. I'm waiting.
Well, have you sent them, you know, asking, "Hey, you know, what's up?"
Yes. I have done that.
Michael, do you have a problem with me sending an email to them?
No.
Asking, "Can you please get back to the applicant?" He was at, he was at a planning board meeting last night?
You know, it's really-
Are you okay with-
To me, it's really a simple-
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's really simply, are you gonna make us put in all of the improvements that you want, which are pretty much the old improvements, a left turn lane, expanding 9G-
Right.
And a deceleration lane? Are you gonna make us do that immediately? Are you gonna not make us do anything? Or are you gonna allow us to build one or two phases, and, you know, reevaluate, and then insist that we put in whatever those mitigating-
I believe that the DOT, when we met with them, they were pretty firm about requiring it, but they didn't say when.
Right.
At the beginning, or-
Well, you can allow me to dream. Number two would see that. I know, I know, number two is highly unlikely, but I don't wanna take it off the table until they insist.
You have enough left turns that they can require it, they send straight out.
That it still meets the left turn, you know, warrants.
Part of the problem, of course, is it's not, it's not very wide, the right of way, it's not very big there.
We looked, it's pretty tough.
Yeah, it's pretty tough. And the guy-
The neighbor?
Across the highway from me, he's gonna have traffic in his front door. But, you know, it's their highway, so, you know, and he bought with it there, so I guess he'll have to live with whatever it is. But, yes, I'm hoping that they will delay, as they did with the Bellfield, in the installation of those improvements, so that we catch our breath a little, being that we're putting in the bridge and then-
No, 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 I'm aware.
You know, I can, so, and then we put that in, which is also another million dollars, you know, check. So, we're hoping on that. And I just wanna point out to the board, it really wasn't our, in our, that we wanted to reduce this. When we did the wetland study, we were compelled to do it. And so, now, and of course, there's a lot involved with the turtle mitigation measures, but once they saw that open space, they seized it. It's like they salivated for it. So, you know, it is what it is, but the wetlands motivate, was, was, was the inspiration for all this.
So, any other comments from consultants? Ms. Moss, any comments from the board?
Not at this time.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none making a motion to adjourn this to August 16th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll get to work, we'll be in touch with you, we'll get to work on the finding statement. I think, was a new EA, was a new EAF submitted? I don't remember on this one, it's been so long.
I'm pretty sure you had at one point.
I think so.
I've submitted it.
Yeah.
Also, I can send it again, so you don't have to go through it.
So, all we have to do then, I think, is reference the answer to the endangered threat in rare species, that will point out the blandings, and then that should be able to get us into. And then we could take the information that Mr. Kaufman gave us for the finding statements for everything else that was already established, so we can reestablish those in terms of even further reduced impacts. So, we'll get it, we'll get it ready for, I hope, by August 16.
Thank you. And, and, you know, Pete and Tad, thank you for the offer. I've been trying, I think we need a meeting.
I'll do it.
Tad was helpful today, but let's make sure that direction she's suggesting is the right way to go.
Yeah, because we had that call, I think, before-
That's three weeks ago.
It was before July 4th, I know that.
July 4th. It was three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago, yeah, that's right.
So, I mean, I know also, when we reach out to them, it takes them sometimes two weeks to just to say, "Well, we're gonna set the meeting now for two weeks later."
Right. Oh, the meeting with DOT?
Yeah.
June 28th.
No, when we try, in other words, just to set it up, we send an email, it takes two weeks for them to get back and say, it'll be two weeks.
Stuff's ingrained in my mind.
Oh, right. At any rate, we'll see you August 16th, but we'll probably be talking to you beforehand.
Okay, great. You don't mind if I continue to sit here, do you?
Nope.
You probably should.
Not at all. Next item on the agenda, Jeffrey Groves Estates. This is also a request to extend the deadlines to complete construction, this has already been started, make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Sotero, your comp, your memo, which talked about rock wall inspection, et cetera?
Yeah, there's some things, so again, the first thing is for the applicant to assume that the board's gonna grant the extension, so that, you know, whenever some, whenever these final items are, like, addressed, the town will be able to issue certificates of occupancy for the house. So, Tad and I made inspection last Friday. You know, now on the north side of the buildings, north and east side of the buildings on Daniel's Way, there's a fairly significant rock cut. Initially, the approved plans, I believe, did not show that as a rock cut. It showed it as to be sloped back on a one-on-three. That obviously didn't happen, because there's a lot of rock there. So, anyway, so, in conjunction with, you know, the grading that was done onto the neighbor's property, you know, apparently that's been, like, resolved with the neighbor, we'll have to get, we'll have to get some kind of, I didn't put that in my memo, but we'll have to get some kind of a sign-off from the neighbor on whatever, you know, he's satisfied with, with whatever.
He verbally said that he was satisfied.
Well, I would think Victoria might want something in writing. So, and then the other thing with, you know, the wall, is that I asked for, there's gonna be a four-foot chain link fence up at the top, so I asked for that to be extended west another 50 feet or so. And in the back on the east, there was always supposed to be, as part of the original approval, there was always gonna be a post and rail fence. So, we talked to Lou's partner, I don't know if it's your partner, but George Brandt, George was there along with the superintendent. So, the chain link fence and the post and rail fence in the back are gonna be installed at the same, same time. So, the other thing is, the units have sliding glass, glass doors that are gonna outlet to a, I don't know, 10-foot-wide, like, patio area, and then there's the rock, there's, you know, the rock cut, so they wanna pour a slab there for, like, a patio, and they're gonna put a vinyl, vinyl fence on the patio that would be a barrier in the event of there's some loose, loose rock. So, I asked them to, that their, their engineer has to update the original site plan that was part of the Daniel's Way set, show the fence on that site plan, show the concrete slab behind there, show the, show the vinyl fence, how it's gonna be attached to the concrete slab. He did, he did submit a plan, but it was the title sheet with a very small inset of the site plan. We don't want that, because it's hard, it's hard to read it. So, he's gonna update, you know, the site plan. So, the other thing that I asked for that we had talked about maybe a month, month prior when we had another site meeting, was, was that the wall was supposed to be inspected by a geotech to make sure that they have scraped off as much of the loose material as they can at this moment, and that if there's any further recommendations as to netting, that may have to be put over the face in certain areas, and then also pinning, you know, the netting to the solid rock. So, we don't really know that yet until, and they were gonna get ahold of their geotech guy, who we know, and so they're in a process, you know, of doing that. So-
So, I think if I can shorten some of that for us, all the changes you thought you wanna have on a new sheet, that sheet gets incorporated into the existing signed site plan?
Yeah. And I thought we could-
Can there be, like, a place to sign, based on this?
Uh, yeah.
Or just accept it?
I don't know, I guess we can figure that out with Victoria. I don't know if it's gotta have, you know, a block on it, or it's just a resolution. We can, we can, we can figure that out.
Okay.
But, you know, it was enough, there was enough stuff there that, you know, we want the planning board to, you know, acknowledge it. We didn't feel it was something that, I mean, Tad and I didn't feel comfortable just saying, "Yeah, that's a minor field change."
It's not a minor field change enough, so that you'd like to have-
I don't think, I mean, I don't believe you'll have a problem with it, but we want everything to be on the up and up, and, and-
Well, I mean, I have to say that we, I don't think anybody had a problem extending this, because you're almost all over it.
No, and they're getting there, I mean, it's-
It was, it was because the neighbor, Mr. Trubich, in the first place spoke about this, and it caused all the inspection out there. So, it was probably a good thing that you learned about the fences and the slabs, the concrete slabs in the back, et cetera. And then the other changes seemed pretty substantial as well, at least enough that you want them acknowledged, because it could be a safety issue there, too.
Yeah.
So, do we need an easement? I think that was a question that we asked.
For the neighbor?
Yeah.
See, the fence is being placed on our property- Yeah, the fence is being placed on their- For us to repair it on our property without ever traversing onto Trubich.
Okay.
So, there should be no easement necessary.
Good.
It's an issue of inspection, wasn't it?
Yeah, the ongoing inspection.
The future inspection, the ongoing inspection. How are we gonna address that?
Well, I knew somebody was gonna ask that question.
It was my question, I, I was gonna ask it-
I mean, it's a good, it's a good question. So, years ago, and of course, like, I'm dating myself, but the-
Join the round.
Milestone, Milestone Square, the plaza out in Pleasant Valley, at the corner of 44 and North Avenue, they have a huge rock wall behind it. And I was involved in the original approval of that, it was kind of like a messy one. And so, they have a, they have an annual, so, so the town required, and again, we're talking a much bigger rock wall than what this is. So, anyway, so they require an annual, like, inspection of that, whether, whether they still do it or not. So, enforcement would be, I don't know how you enforce it. So, why don't we just wait and see what the geotech comes, like, back with, in terms of, he may say, eh, you know, "This is not a big deal, maybe we just gotta net this one little area, pin it, and then, you know, we'll be good." So, why don't we just wait and see what he comes back with initially?
Do we know how long it might take the geotech analysts to get back with us?
I don't know, George was gonna go call him and-
Yeah, I, I don't know, you know, I'm sure it won't take that long, but-
The reason why I ask is because we've had a resolution to extend this and put it on hold until the issues that the neighbor brought up, they've been resolved, or they have been.
Well, but they're gonna have to come back with the site plan and any recommendations on the rock wall, netting or pinning, for your approval, perhaps if they get it done in time for your first August meeting?
Well, that's-
So, extending, extending this wouldn't-
So-
They're not, like, tied, like, together, right?
I don't know. So, if we extend it, then-
Maybe I'm missing, I'm sorry.
If we extend the current plan, then it doesn't incur, it doesn't include your new sheet that has everything.
Oh, oh, I see.
I was trying to wait to extend it based on having the new sheet in there.
Right. If I would suggest that, you know, I would like to get the extension, only
because we are also ready to, we've paved the way a road, the second road, and we're ready to get permits on that. However, there is the ultimate weapon, and that is we get no COs, unless everything is in place. So, I would suggest that, you know, we do it great haste, the information that Pete wants, however, I'd appreciate if we give this extension, conditional if you'd like, and so that we can, you know, that Don is ready to issue permits tomorrow. I'd like to get that done.
Well, no, you know, come on, he's not ready to issue permits tomorrow, there's still a lot of building to, I think that, I think that George was talking about, you know, August, that they hope, they hope, they hope to be ready.
That could be an optimistic thing, that's what he told me, but I wasn't proven-
Well, you're an optimistic guy, we know that.
Yeah, I'm very positive, all the time.
So, Michael, what about, I mean, is, can you approve it, conditioned upon-
Here's what I'm going to say, I don't have Victoria here, but I believe-
Conditioned upon submission of an updated site plan showing the-
I believe so, but-
Showing the improvements.
We need to have Victoria here, I'm not an attorney.
Okay.
I don't, I believe we've conditioned extensions before.
Or can we shorten the extension, just do an extension for two weeks or four weeks?
That, that's-
What is it, I mean, what is it?
Wait, 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 wait.
What is it, hold on, hold on.
Sorry, chair's going back into control over this now, stop. Number one, if we do it for two weeks, when he comes back in, he has to reapply for the next extension, that requires a new public hearing, it requires more fees, et cetera. If that's what he wants, you can have it. That's what it takes. I'm just, I'm asking you all to remember what the process has to be, based on our code.
But, 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 you're asking me for the suggestion, it was-
I mean, is there any, is there any hurry to doing it? I mean, is there any reason tonight, or?
The only thing, I, to my understanding, was that Mr. Westmeyer was ready to allow us to start, to, if, issue building permits for the, the other road, but because we don't have an extension in place, he was, you know, holding back on that, or wary about that.
Let me, let me start over again. If you would like the extension, we can schedule it for the next meeting, because we don't have the resolution up here tonight. But, if you don't have the sheet that they want to be incorporated into the plans, then you have to come back and amend the site plan, that's another fee, another public hearing. I'm not trying to be sarcastic, I'm just, I know it, how this process operates and what Tad would have to say, to get, to get that in. So, if we can extend this with the sheet in there, that has all the changes that are detailed-
Okay.
Then there's no amended site plan, it just becomes part of the site plan.
Okay, so are you saying that there's a possibility that if I come in with the appropriate plans, et cetera, that on August 2nd, is that the next day we can-
Well, you'd need to get them to us before August 2nd, because we'd have to take a look at them, to review them.
I mean, Brian's, Brian's work is pretty easy, because he's already got it. He's gonna transfer from one plan to the other, and add a couple of details. So, it's more of a question of, you know, your geotech getting out there, looking at the wall, making any recommendations, which should be-
Because I understand where you are, you're between the rock and the har-
That wasn't meant to be that way.
That wasn't meant to be that way, sorry.
Right.
But, you're stuck right now, because you wanna move forward, but you can't move forward without the extension. But, if you wanna move forward, we can schedule this for August 2nd and just extend it out, as I said, for the two years, but then you'd have to amend that site plan in order for us to incorporate the changes.
Okay, so-
That's what I believe the process would be, Tad. I'm not trying to speak for you, but-
Sounds good.
Sounds right.
So, but, okay, so, Pete is looking for a, more than one sheet to describe the work, right? I mean, we have it all on one-
It can be all put on, it can be all put on just the site plan, that's part of the approved Daniel's Way set. Just, you know, the site plan, not the title sheet. And, well, we'll have to figure out, like, can you just accept the new site plan by resolution, or you have to sign it? I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, we can find that out quickly.
It's, so this is one of those instances where we've done this before, and we've, the planning board's acknowledged it, so it can be incorporated in. It's, it's like what we used to call the tracing paper, where they show us what the changes are. In this case, there's enough changes and enough details in the set that they need to show us the plan. But as long as we acknowledge it, then yes, I think we can just incorporate it into the existing plans. And that's the easiest way forward for you, and cheapest way forward for you.
Yeah. One plan, he can put, he can put, he can put, you know, the details for the fence right on this, right, right on this, I'm sure he's got, like, room on that site plan somewhere, you can put them on there. So, it's only one sheet.
Okay. So, in other words, within the existing site plan, you would like to have-
With the approved, the approved-
Approved site plan, you would like to amend one sheet?
One sheet.
Not amend, just incorporate changes.
To incorporate, which essentially on this plan. This is the one with all the, with the two details for the different fencing and-
Well, a new sheet, yes, but-
No, it's your quote, Pete.
Why's he making it?
It's gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna be the old plan with a revision date on it, for what, what they're, like, revising with the updated information on it. Then we'll accept it, however the right-
We can acknowledge and reference the resolution, that just becomes-
It's not gonna do like a brand-new sheet.
Okay. So, then I need Victoria's blessing. So, I will try to sort this out.
Get with Brian, I'll look at it, I mean, he can go send me a plan in advance.
I was gonna say, just make sure that you talk to Pete, that what Pete and Tad want on the sheet is on there, that's basically it.
Yeah, okay.
We'll work with Brian. The biggest thing is just getting, you know, the geotech out there to look at it, and then make any recommendations. And those should be, if there's any recommendations, which I assume there will be some, they should be notes on the site plan, and then we would need to make sure that that's incorporated before COs are issued.
So, before we would finalize whatever plans amending, this site plan is, you wanna see the geotech report?
Michael, can I say something quick?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm calling everybody shortly, sorry.
Can we just authorize Pete to send an email to Lou stating what he wants, on which sheet?
I did, I wrote a memo.
So, then that, that's all we have to do.
You got the memo, right?
I wrote a memo.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I have.
Well, George got it, I think I sent it to George.
What we've been talking, really what the purpose of all this has been, is Lou would like to get this extension as fast as possible, but we've been explaining to him that, once you get that sheet, then it's gonna be-
You, you keep giving me those little trigger words, "As fast as possible," and you wanna do it for less money, you know, you keep hitting me with the things I like most.
Well, I will say this, I don't, I started thinking about it, I don't know what, I Well, I will say this, I don't, I started thinking about it, I don't know what, I don't know what your costs are, your project costs, and so, maybe it's cheaper for you to get an extension quickly, because you're having to lose or pay for people to stay out there who you're supposed to be out there paving roads. I don't, I don't know all the finances, all I know is what our end looks like. And it's, it's also time, because if we have to amend the site plan formally, you've got to make a new application, it's got to be sent to county planning, or to county...
You don't want to go through all that.
That's nonsense, I think.
Well, I'm not suggesting that.
So, as long as, yes, let me, let me go back, yes, Tad, next comments.
If there is a need for a regular inspection by a Geotech, it can be incorporated into the reports that are supposed to come to the town for the Stormwater Basin that are supposed to occur on a regular basis. So there is an avenue to do that.
Great, that would be the inspection.
And I would hope that there would be regular inspections.
We could make that a condition of the extension.
If the Geotech recommends it.
I was going to say, we won't know that unless the Geotech, so we don't even have conditions yet for extending, so, that's why if we extend it to a certain time period, that's all we can do until you re...
So, sounds like I'll see you on the 2nd, and hopefully I'll have a lot in place.
Do we think we can have this done by the, can this be done by the 2nd? Is that enough time?
I think it's really in their...
Is that enough time?
Yeah, it's up to them.
We would need the plans, well, technically, we're supposed to be having the plans for, it's August 2nd, like tomorrow.
Yeah.
But, can you get them to us a week in advance?
I think so.
I'll be next week.
Okay. So first, let me, any other comments from consultants? Thank you for edifying what was in every way. Mr. Reed, comments?
None.
Mr. Waters?
I think enough has been said.
Ms. Watson?
You know.
Ms. Dexter?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
Just hoping to move this as easily as we can.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? They're being then making a motion to adjourn to August 2nd.
Some of them.
On paper, please, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, thank you for taking your time up, I know that...
No, 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 this is important stuff.
Yeah, it is.
Again, we're just trying to find the path forward, because this is all, this is all details, they just need to go into the plan.
Okay, well, in any event, thank you for your emphasis.
See you in two weeks. Next one on the agenda is a workshop item, this is, that'll field again, this is Phase 2A of a site plan approval. The applicant seeking site plan approval for 12 townhouses, entry sign barn, I believe another barn, but we'll let the applicants go through this. I mean, this is the first phase of the development that we'll be seeing. And by the way, Larry, thank you for providing this, it was very clear to go through, and you got my comments on your architecture, I think you did a great job.
Great job on changing the architecture.
Thank you, everybody. And again, Larry Boudreaux with Bellfield, Matthew Tether with LMVs to my right, Michael Amadazi to my left is the developer, which, which we're working with, obviously, and then of course Jared O'Connor. So, before I go through this, since you've never met Mike before, I'd like him to introduce himself, tell you who he is, his company, what they do.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members, pleasure to be here. My name is Michael Appolata, I'm a founder and the owner of Argos Construction Development. We started this company about 21 years ago, mostly we work in New York City, Westchester, Bergen County, Florida, Connecticut. About 40 years ago, five years ago, we switched the gears and we moved, we started upstate. So first, my project was in Poughkeepsie, I have a couple multifamily dwellings in Then we picked up a few developments in Bergen County, Rockland County, completed very successfully. We became one of the largest development in Orange County, currently we're doing about four developments. I have a hundred home subdivision currently on a process, we have about 30, we started about a year and a half ago, we have about 33 houses already built and sold, we have a bunch of contracts, problem is that we cannot build fast enough to accommodate the needs, even so, today's economy, I just got an offer now of my houses, which is great I have a, currently, I have an ongoing development in Poughkeepsie, about 87 unit department buildings, bunch of other things that I'm working in town in Poughkeepsie, the Way beyond the, Middletown, Schlotzberg, I have multiple developments ongoing, I have development in New Hempstead, New City, on and on. So, Bellfield was brought to my attention about a year ago, a year and a half ago, with my fellow architect, Michael McCormick, good friend of mine. At the first, this was like, what a, you know, beyond my scale of the jobs that I do, I only have done like 100 homes and so far, at the one development, so it's kind of bigger scale. But, my team and I decided, and then we did the presentation, I'm not sure if it's here today, but we generate about 60-page presentation for the entire subdivision, we explore our visions on the individual apartments, townhouses, estate homes, wineries, all that. So, that one impressed, I guess, Bellfield, so we started it small, we would like to get involved in the 12-unit townhouses, which was fine to us, is a starting point, and I would like to get to know the town, I would like to get into the neighborhood, I'd like to know the area and, you know, my JV partners. But one thing that I know very strongly, I believe, currently, New York State has about 800,000 unit shortages for next decades. Mid Hudson Valley is one of the hot markets today in, in New York. Market is there, our vision is there, we came up with slightly different, unique, sleek-looking townhouses, I'm not sure if board members had a chance to look at the, our designs, it's certainly different than, you know, what's on the market currently, but I would like to propose, I would like to have a chance to explore my vision, I would like to have a chance to explain why we did this, where we come with this, and then I leave it up to you guys to make a decision on that.
First, welcome to Hyde Park, it's a pleasure to meet you, and we look forward to working with you. This is pretty digestible for you, because it's just 12 townhouses, so, and it's, when I raised that there might be possible objections to the architecture, it wasn't objections to the original look, it's just that it didn't seem to match with the Bellfield design manual we labored on for a year, to make sure that we could make everything go faster later without having to cavil or look at architecture over and over again, so that was the purpose of me just giving a heads up to Larry, and I, to me, as I wrote to him earlier, I thought that the changes looked just like the design manual now, and they're not that substantial, it's just changing the window mullions, some of the fabrication and making a higher peak, that's about it, so...
Sure.
And yes, you're right, the Mid Hudson Valley is hot right now, so it's, it's funny, having lived here for almost 30 years, it's exciting too, but to see the changes, this place used to be really sleepy now that I think back on it, and it's not sleepy anymore, it's not going to be sleepy anymore either, so, at any rate, welcome.
Thank you.
And do you want to continue with your presentation?
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, so, just to remind everybody again, so here's the concept development plan prepared by Hart Howerton, and for our Phase 2, we overlaid it, so that's the entire Phase 2 that we're just about meeting all the conditions, we had a call with Tad and Pete this afternoon on the SWIP, so we're very close on that. And then the townhouse section, which we defined as our construction phase 2A, is right there where Jared is showing it. Yeah, so, so that's it, so in the set we submitted, this is just the site plan, but we thought through it, these are, these are real footprints on the Phase 2, we were kind of blocking where we felt they would land, this, working with Mike, we actually defined what they were, length, width, and garage and access on the terrace side, or the garage side, and access on the front side, so we worked out all the details from a site planning standpoint on this site plan, when you do get a chance to look at it, we located the mail kiosks, we located pads for generators, we located, well, we had to understand how we're going to manage the garbage, and that's why that loop to the right swings up, because we can't get a garbage truck in there, you know, without swinging around that loop, so we, so that is different from what you saw on the Phase 2.
I just want to point out that it was always acknowledged that the concept development plan would be refined as we went forward into each phase, this is just a refinement, in other words, it's not a major change.
Right, thank you. So, next phase, yeah, and, well, I'm sorry, Jared, just go back, one of the comments that the board made was having the turnaround, so that turnaround is there, we may end up keeping that, because that would be a gateway into the second hotel, that's the thought. And then, instead of deadening it, going to the left or to the north, you go to the next page, we went ahead and we'll get that road in, down, and then down to the page, page south, so down to the, where the, the current road ends right now, so that whole loop will be in with sidewalks, lights, landscaping, curbs.
I know it's going to be some money, but once you get that in, then I think it's going to be easier to get your next tenants lined up and go.
Exactly, because what it does do is create, so that's four, five, six, it creates lot seven, so lot seven is there. There's two other things on this site plan, Jared, could you point out 1800, the entrance barn is, is right there, which, since this is our first time coming in with a construction phase, we essentially match what you've already seen on 1800, I did include this here, so you can see it, Tom wanted the windows higher, so they're a bit higher, right. The other thing, as, as, just a question, Jared, can you go up, yeah, show them the stone tower, do you see where the stone tower is?
Yeah.
By the wall, by the wall, there you go, one more, a little bit more, there you go, right there. So, right now, that's boarded up, as you may know, and so, the hotel guys are telling me we can't have guests looking at the boarded up thing, so, I did include in here, putting windows in there, we got to get windows in there, a door, and a roof on this thing. So I think it falls in as a rehab or renovation, so I was going to pull it together, get it to Dad and, Don and Tad, and go from there, okay?
In other words, this, this isn't necessarily part of this Phase 2A, it's shown now so that the board can acknowledge it, because it's part of the overall site plan, but because it's an existing structure, Mr. Boudreaux is going to go talk to Tad and Don to see what kind of building permit would be necessary, but usually with, I think it needs to be repointed, the mortar's been...
Yes, yep.
Crumbling for years.
Yes, it's the limestone, it's...
Yeah, so in other words, it's, there's some work to get it back to looking like it used to and should have always looked.
Yep.
Yes, Ted?
Unless there's a use that's going to go inside the building, it, I think we would typically call it a repair.
Yeah.
To an existing structure.
Rehab and repair of existing structure.
Is it historical?
No, this was evaluated, so, actually, this was evaluated by the New York State Office of Historic Preservation, and to me, interestingly, none of us really knew what it was, it's a water tower, and the style, if memory serves, is actually from California, it got brought back here somehow, so, to OPRHP, it was not worthy of any kind of historic designation, otherwise it would have a zone around it, like the Walton Roosevelt Estate has, the old farmhouse, a base, so no, this was not due to its historic.
Okay, because that was one of my questions.
Or historically significant.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so this is the, the lower part of this page is building 1800 or the entrance barn, and then the next sheet is the actual working drawings for, for the barn, so I will get this in tomorrow, so we can be on the agenda in two weeks, and you can give us comments on it, or whatever you want on that.
My person, we can't hear you?
Can't hear you, yeah.
Sorry?
So this was not included in, in our set, because we're matching what you've already seen, but I will include it, that's my, that's what I'm saying.
That's building 18, 1800?
1800.
Yeah.
Yep.
There's a water tower.
This is the stone tower.
Mm-hmm.
We, yeah, so we've went out there, we has-built it, we got a man lift out there measuring all the windows and the roof and all that, and, so that's, that's what it is. There was a shed roof over the door, go back up, Jared, a little bit, it's the shed roof to your right, yeah, there you go, right there, and then, yeah, you can see where it was, so we're just going to reinstall that.
I think it's really great you're doing this.
Is the architecture of this, the, you know, the rehab of it, is it going to be, like, is it a Craftsman style, what, what style is, like the door, is that a steel door? Do you call out the door?
I believe we do.
Is it a Craftsman-style door?
Go, go down one. Is it called out there?
Just a metal flush door?
Yeah, that's...
I'm sorry, we can't hear you at all.
Yep, sorry.
There should be, there should be, there's not an extra microphone there?
Victoria, have a...
Sorry.
Just reading out, just reading it out, it's a new painted metal door, end frame, reused good-conditioned bricks and filling and new openings.
Yeah, it's such a beautiful structure, that it might need more than a steel door.
Send us, send us your thoughts.
Okay. I have some...
I know you do, I know you do.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one? Okay, so, so Mike introduced himself, I wanted him to go first this time, so what we have next, and then we can open up the questions, so, I provided in this package what the original elevations look like for the townhouses, followed by what we submitted, then, and again, thank you for meeting with us on Friday, it was very short notice, and it doesn't always happen, planning boards in town, so...
We try to work with you, you know.
I know you do, I know you do, thank you very much. So, after that meeting, Hart Howerton...
That's probably the easiest way for everybody else to see, including the audiences, no, the actual pictures, rather than the, because you can see better what that would look like.
Yes, so, so that's what was submitted. You can go down, and we're, we're going to come back to these, because I know Mike's going to speak to...
And then these images are taken from the actual design manual that we approved.
Yes, yes.
So, and if you, it's hard to see here, it's much easier for us to see here, but basically, they take some of the elements that I noted that were in the design manual, and incorporated them into the basic look of what was proposed initially, here you can see where they, have they changed the windows, added different materials in the front that were all part of the approved manual.
Yeah, zoom out a little bit? Yeah, so after the call on, on Friday, Nicole sent this to us on, on Monday, and they looked to articulate some things, and, you know, play around with some of the materials, and again, we're looking for your feedback on that.
Too long for the show?
Yep, I'll go down to the next one, and then this is where Stone was brought up, and, you know, again, Mike has...
Larry, could you speak closer to the mic, please?
Or just use the handheld?
Okay.
Six of one, you have to remember, you have to remember to hold that one right next to your mouth when you talk.
So I'm going to take, over now, so the first design that we come up with, can you go back, please? So, so this one, right, so, so this design was based on original plans, was, was just modified slightly, and I was trying to put more like a barn farm kind of look, right? So then, that, that we have is a limestone, limestone stucco, which is smooth finish, has the, it definitely has the contemporary look to it, and some modern...
Farms and farms don't usually have limestone stucco exteriors.
I'm sorry?
Farms and farms don't really have limestone stucco exteriors.
Well, definitely, I have inspiration pictures that, that the barns have the stucco on it, I mean, there is a mixed thing with the, with the, we did the, we did the project in Hyde Park in Los Angeles, I mean, California, like, about 30 minutes from Los Angeles, and we pretty much copy everything, and I have great videos that I can...
If you read the design manuals, it's Hudson Valley architecture, not California.
So, no, no, I, I know, but we took the design model from here, and then we established there, so that's what I'm saying, we don't use anything from California, we use actually what we had from, from locally here. But anyway, so, there's two components here, so let's, let's hold over the exterior design now, but, you know, the, if you see that we have, all of them has like the rooftop, patio kind of thing, right? As, if we consider the, the locations where, where it is proposed, these townhouses, we have the main street from the entrance, and that's where the entrance is, right? There's no way for us to use this as a backyard, as we have to call it, as a front yard. In the back, we have the garages, and there's no way that we can, we can have any backyard for the, our residents to use it, so. The only chance was there to go and do something for the, for the rooftop. Now, the requirements was there, that we must have a gable. So, I think that combination between a little patio rooftop and the gable, it's already suits to the requirements, right? So now, the question is, like, you know, we have this big, open windows glass, is this is acceptable? Or that's also the questionable for the-
I, I'm sorry, I already answered all these things with Larry earlier, I thought that he conveyed this to you. If you look inside the design manual, there's not one example of a residential that has big, flat, open windows, so no. To me, it's not acceptable, but, I don't, I'm not the only vote up here, there's six other people, so. I was trying to-
Well, I'm not, I'm talking to everybody, so.
If you're, but if you're going to try to make a case for this, then, the case, I believe, has already been made aesthetically. It wasn't, like I said, it's not an objection to the way it looks, I just, in my opinion, it doesn't match the design manual at all. That was the attempt for the other two versions, was-
But if we go back to, if we go back to original design manuals, I mean, it's, this is, looks very similar to it.
I'm sorry, go down, Jared.
I'm sorry, that may be your opinion, but it's not mine at all. I don't think it looks anything like what was approved.
Well, Michael, I mean, let, let's look at together this, so, so this one. Even see, this one has, they all have the huge windows on it. They have a huge windows, they have a metal roof, they have the cables, I mean, only, only difference is that we have a rooftop there.
Can we keep going?
We're not objecting to the rooftop deck, it's, you're not gonna persuade me probably, at all, that your look, which is very starkly modern with that canopy that juts out vertically, you need to incorporate more of what was in the design manual, to me. I mean, the, the purpose of this was not to, again, to make it faster to go further, rather than arguing over architecture. I think, I told Mr. Boudreaux, in my opinion, we'll hear shortly from everybody else, but, if you go down next to see what those two options are, I think both those options, you keep the rooftop, you keep everything else, I think this matches better with what you just saw from the design manual. And the difference between these two is you have the stone base, which, if people like that, and it's affordable for you guys, great, but, the first one looks simple and like it matches it too, to me. So, but, again, we're gonna hear from the rest of the board, so.
Do you have, do you have other one that we did with the, the old reclaimed wood?
So, so that's the last one. This, this last one is the same as the first one, except it has the reclaimed wood instead of the stone.
And has the stone in the bottom.
And it has a stone base, but, you know, the form is, is the same, so.
I wonder why it was there, so, but, again, if you go back to the design manual, you have other embellishments, and those are now incorporated in the sort of sketches that we saw, that, also, the roof peak gets higher, I noticed, like, is more similar to what was approved in the original plans, but, I mean, to me, these two capture what you're looking for, in terms of the layout, the floor plan, the, the side patios, et cetera, but they, again, better marry in with what was approved after being carefully analyzed. So, these, you'll note, have all small windows, they have, what am I trying to say? Higher peaks, like I said, these have returns. I think you've done a good job, like I said, in either one of these, of making sure that you kept the form you want, with the exception of making the roof more peaked. But you're adding the materials that were in the approved site plan set, so. But let's hear from other people.
Can you zoom in on that? Yeah, thank you, so.
Do you want us to talk about?
Yeah.
Let me, let me call on everybody in, in a row. So, are you ready for us to start talking about the architecture now? Let me first go over to our consultants. Ms. Franson, any comments?
So, I was on that phone call, I, with Hart Howerton. I just had a quick question, because you seem to really like the first set of pictures. Are you not liking the second set that are portrayed here? I mean, what, what specifically is the design that you wanna pursue? So everybody knows.
So, good question, so, basically, if I go with this design, right, so, we, we are, we are looking this from the main street side, right? So, aesthetically, if I take this stone, that right now it's in the first floor, it's gonna go, and it's gonna be two-story in the back, so. Aesthetically, it's, it's not gonna edge up, like, you're gonna have like, you know, halfway up stone, then, you know, where do you stop, right? What I, what I think that I propose is to have, like, what's called water table in the front, and then go around the garage, so you still have that stone look that we are looking for, or the board is looking for, and then, in the back, it's gonna be the entire first, entire lower floor. So it's not gonna be that big, bulky, I mean, lot of stone, it just, to me, it's like, you know, it's not a barn, it's like the castle, like, you know, so if we're talking about barn, then I will go with a, a water table level, and then I do the reclaimed wood or something else to even keep. I, I don't wanna bring too many materials, like, you know, if I, I have to give rid of one of the components, either reclaimed wood, or I have to give rid of the-
So you don't wanna do both, the wood?
No, no, two is fine, like, two is fine, but the three, three different components on, on the, on the one, one design building, I think it's way too much.
So, so what I saw in terms of changes was the stone base, and then the wood cladding.
Correct.
So, so that's, do you like that yourself?
I, I like it, I mean, I, so, the other one where we have, it's too much reclaimed wood, so we kinda have to break it out something and make it more like, you know-
The one that you, you're showing us?
The, the last one.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, I think it's too much of a, like, camouflage. I, I do like the stone in the bottom, I just have to work it out, what can I do on the, on, on the top part?
Okay.
And I don't, I, I definitely agree that we should go higher, the gable, fine, we'll, we'll do that.
So, so from my perspective, and this isn't, again, a matter of what kinda architecture I like, it's about, as Michael has said, the design manual. So, from the stone perspective, the stone is looking heavier to me. You know, the big blocks, looks a little heavy. The wood, you know, it's, it's still, for me, the facade compared to the design manual is reading a bit flat. And one of the things we talked about on the call was having things that give a little more articulation. I think the windows themselves, I agree that the design manual does show that size windows, but what it also incorporates is like the mullions and the dividers. So it, it gives more interest, visual interest, in the windows themselves. That, that to me is like the primary difference, it's not the size of the windows, it's that you're adding the mullions in there for visual interest. So, I mean, that's just instantaneous reaction, but it's really, it's really the town boards.
The mullions, it just, you know, square one around it.
It's, the, the windows are reading corporate to me, a little bit. And so there you see, on the, one on the left, how you have that, the individual, the appearance of individual panes. And it doesn't have to be that many, if you go to the image before that.
Right.
Go up, sorry. Yeah, so, look at the one, especially on the upper right. So to me, that is very similar, the one on the upper right-hand corner, right? But there's a little additional window, you've got the panes going on, it just reads differently, from my perspective, but I think it's, again, a planning board call.
I mean, the whole idea is to be like, slightly different than not everybody else. I don't wanna copy the Toll Brothers, or Leonard, or any of those builders, then, you know.
I don't believe the design manual was really in, meant to have-
These, these, these units, you see everywhere, like, I, and a Toll Brothers building behind my office, and what I, all they learn, I look at this, these buildings, and that's what they build, like, it's like, like, every other structure is like that, I mean, my vision is to be like sleek, unique, like, you know, different, so the people, why would I have to come in Hyde Park if, you know, if you don't impress me with design, right? I can buy something in Fischke for seven hundred thousand dollars. Toll Brothers have the same thing. I don't need to come in town, Hyde Park. What I design in, in Poughkeepsie right now, none of, none of, none of Dutchess County see this, and I had so much opposition. When I said, now they love it, I got it approved yesterday, condition- I mean, I wanna bring something that people don't see, I take district properties, and I, I bought a, I bought a development in Rockland County, like, twenty eighteen, guy was selling the house for six hundred thousand dollars, he couldn't sell, why? I'm selling right now, one, I sold everything for one and a half million dollars. You know why? Because I changed the design. Now, whole Rockland County's building the same thing. It's, it's about unique product. It's not about, like, and you go on my website, you see, I have sleek, unique model, you don't see like, even the houses that I built for eight hundred thousand dollars, they're different than, you know, other houses you see eight hundred thousand dollars. I wanna bring something that's different. I, I don't, you know, I just don't- But I, but-
And no, I, I don't know where to go.
No, I was just gonna say that I think, from, again, from the design perspective, we already talked about that it can be a modern version, but it has to be grounded in Hudson Valley precedent. So it's not that it can't be modern, or, or, you know, less of the-
Modern elements.
Yeah, or, you know, we talked about the word "pistiche", where things are made to look like it, but they really aren't. So it can be modern, but I think, again, there are just certain design elements that, that particular image, to me, reflects what, you know, at the time, when the design guidelines were put together, what the expectation would be, and I'm not sure there's quite a match here. But again, this is a planning board, you know, discussion and decision, so.
Ms. Satero, comments, if any?
No, you know, the engineer is impressed with any kinda architecture. You guys are the-
Do you have any comments on the rest of the site?
I haven't even opened up the plane yet.
Okay. Ms. Moss, comments?
I just want to let the board know that, and you did address it, that there is garages on the back of the building, so you see three stories here, there's another lower story on the back. And another thing that, that I noticed, Larry, is that the retaining wall in the back by the parking area has been eliminated.
Yes.
They regraded.
How that grading is working.
Let me start to my right, Mr. Oliver, comments?
Well, thank you guys for bringing forth this pretty unique design. Initially, I, I looked at this, and I'm like, you know, kinda aligning with Michael's comments regarding the, how it doesn't really fit into the design guideline, and we took so much time to make all these things happen. And then, you know, I looked at it in its entirety, in, in the one section. Like, my big thing with Bellofield is the downtown section, and this is kind of separate, and I, I like that. But I, I honestly don't like the first design at all. But what I, I do like is, if you were to go with this reclaimed wood that you have on this picture, take the stone, I, I think I can live with these windows, if you use the reclaimed wood, because it breaks up that, you know, monotonous facade. But you take the stone, and maybe to bring into, like that, you have like a large ashlar. See if you, and are you planning to do veneer, I, I imagine?
Stone veneer?
Stone veneer, or are you gonna go natural stone?
No, stone veneer.
Maybe see if you can find like, like a river rock veneer, or round cobble, something that would, you know, kinda offset the linear dimensions that you're presenting. And that may tie into the more natural farm look. But I feel if you were to put the windows that are in the design manual in this kinda design, it would look a little too busy. But I do like the reclaimed wood, and I think if you change that ashlar stone to a, a more round, you know, flowing stone, it may really change the whole look of, of that, and being that this is only twelve units, you know, we're not talking about the whole, you know, downtown part of this, so, you know, you soften, soften the modern a little bit. I'm not sure, you know, my idea is to do it with a, a round stone, instead of an ashlar stone, maybe add some different landscaping. And I think you, you get me in, in the right direction. And again, that's, being said, that's because it's a small section, and, you know, I, I think people that are going to be looking at these townhomes, like you said, are gonna want something different. They're not gonna wanna look at, you know, buy a million dollar, or a one-point-two-million-dollar townhouse, and have it look like the apartment that is, you know, seven hundred feet down the road. So, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, that was very clear. Ms. Dexter?
Yeah, I'm definitely not the architecture person, but I, but I do know, you know, I, I can see exactly what you, you're going for, and I don't see, I also like this, this one with the, with the barnwood, and, yeah, if you did something different with the stone, but what I am seeing is a lot of different, like it, what do you call that? Articulations, right? Where it comes, pops out, it goes in, it's, it has balconies. I don't, I, I'm in agreement with, with Chris, in that these are twelve units that are right near Dorsey, that are kinda by themselves, really. And I have been a proponent of what I call organized chaos, which means you need to throw in like something where people are like, whoa, you know, that's, but I also see that it, this one also kinda really aligns with the design guidelines in the lower right-hand quadrant. Cause it's got the, it pops out, it goes in. I don't know, I, you know, we, we sit here and we debate architecture all the time. Everybody's got their, this is and the that's, and the-
That's what we do in my office too, when we do design, design planning, yes, that's how it is.
But I like this, because you've got the, the reclaimed barnwood, and you've taken something modern, but you're, it's kinda like a play, you're like, taking something old, but it-
No, this one actually was done, like, we, we, I got this message on Saturday, literally, I worked over the weekend, and, you know, do the renderings takes like, you know, forty-eight hours, it's, so, I, I made everybody work overtime on the weekends, and I said, I need something different, so. We tried to come up, this was like, you know, done like, like, kinda like overnight, and we just wanna have a like different look, so we don't really have much of a thorough, you know, we don't, I have about thirty-nine guys working on this, so we, I had like five guys only, so we made a quick sketch, so to speak, so. We didn't have a, you know, we, we, I try to be prepared, much as I can, when I go to the planning board meeting, respectfully, you know, I don't wanna, you know, just go up and hand me this, and I don't have nothing, so I, we did what we could for, have, you know, different versions, so, you know, planning board can see the difference, and, you know, understand that, you know, what our vision is, so that's why we just, you know, put there something. And we, certainly, we didn't, you know, choose selected the stones properly, and, you know, definitely, stones can be worked down, you know, what's on the bottom, and, you know, maybe, maybe do different type of, instead of reclaimed wood, I mean, we, we have a bunch of samples that we can use a different, different product as a, as a very cool siding.
I, I think, you know, one of the things, I, I grew up on Dorsey, and like, right across the street from this section is, is a house that was built, it's, it's all wood, it's a, forget what it's, like cedar shakes, it's got the skylights in it, it was very modern at the time, it was like a, it was like one of the most modern houses. So this is almost, it's a play, it's kinda playing, what it's saying. But then, as you go in and go into the different sections, you're gonna see other different type, different types of architecture. I don't want it to look the same. But I feel like you have picked up the design guidelines.
Thank you.
You have to go?
No, thank you.
Ms. Wasser?
Okay, so first, I, I appreciate that you gave different options, and I hear your enthusiasm, and my colleague mentioned the word passion, for one, you know, you're a creator, so.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That said, you know, when I think about other elements that we, we've been working on this for years, and some thoughts that come to mind- And some thoughts that come to mind that have already been approved, the signage package and those materials. Everything that we, that, that's been approved already with natural wood and so the, the design with the limestone stucco is a non-starter for me. It's too symmetric and, and even the peaks, it's a bit symmetrical for me, but it feels too sterile. Um, it is very Cali or Miami or something, but it's not here. I, I'm, we don't all have to have all the same architecture, right? But we're adjacent to New England. That's not to be disregarded. So that's where the mullions come in for me. Um, the mullions for me are prob, the lack of them is probably a non-starter. Uh, I like board and batten with some stone. I understand the two material concept. Um, I think that, I have to put my glasses on, see my, my notes. Uh, I like the stone base, the smaller stone base, the water table base. I thought Chris's comment about the size of the stone was interesting. Um, and I like the higher gable. Uh, but even the barn board to me, I think Chris used the word monotonous facade. When we start with those words, it's not good. So that's why I like the breakup of, 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 of board and batten or some other materials. I think that's, I think that's enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Mr. Waters?
Yes, um, yes, thank you. Um, I had, uh, submitted stuff on the drawing and had sent it out. Yours got kicked back and I think Mr. McCormick's had gotten kicked back. I don't know if Larry had gotten it. Okay, I sent it, but it might be the size of the project. Yep. Um, so, so I'll just read you what I had put together. Let's see. First of all, I like option one. And I'll tell you why, because I, I think it's.
Option one is?
Option one on the drawing, the sketch.
That one.
That one. Yep. Okay. Now, I, there's a couple of things that I might like to see incorporated into it, but, you know, as a feeling, it feels like it could fit in this community. Um, so I like the feeling of option one. It has a lot of nice elements that will work well with the rest of the project while maintaining a unique charm. Okay? It also is, has a contemporary feel to it because of the high gables. Okay? I would suggest that the water table depicted may, may be too insignificant. Um, thinking about the entry stair, see, we, we don't see the whole picture. There's entry stairs, there's this rerise. Okay. So you're talking 24 inches up and then you're on a platform. Okay? And then obviously you have columns there supporting some kind of a rail system. So, so I just said that, you know, you're looking at maybe 60 inches of water table. Not quite the whole wall like the, the option two, but maybe, you know, half of that wall or a little less than half would be nice. So that it maybe falls in with the platform. But without knowing that, what that material is, is it going to be wrought iron railing? You know, I mean, I don't know. Is it, I'm, I'm figuring it's probably blue stone, stone. I, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're, we're still working through.
Right. So, so that would be a detail that I, I would, you know, need to know about. But, but, um, so I, I think how the entry stairs and railing could be constructed and what the materials will be, stone, blue stone tread, that might, that, that may be the height of the cap on the water table. And then I went through the 60 inches, uh, for the railing posts and entry platform. If, if it is left at approximately 24, it may not be seen with plantings in front. So we don't see any plants in this. So if you have ground cover, you know, bushes, you're covering that water table. So it's, it's not significant enough to give it that anchor, I think, on the structure. That's why I'd like to see it a little higher. But, um, I think Tom, and I put T-Rex, likes timbers and that may be something to incorporate. Limited though, just brackets on, on things, just a little, you know, dug fur. And then I give you a company that I've used in the past that is very reasonable and does dug fur stuff. Uh, and they do custom things. Um, I do not, uh, think it is appropriate to not have soffits and gutter line. Makes the structure seem too contemporary. So I think a little bit of a soffit, it doesn't have to be oversized. It doesn't have to be, you know, 16, 18 inches, anything like that. It just, the, the way the, the ones that were portrayed earlier, the contemporary ones, it's like the, everything is flush. It's, it's squared off. Like there's no, there's no soffit, nothing. It's the roof ends and the wall starts. So how would you put a gutter system or anything on it? So.
Right. So you're referring to?
The, the, the.
Limestone.
Yeah, the limestone. Yeah. And I don't mind the limestone. I don't mind the reclaimed wood. I don't mind stone. Uh, so that, that's all good things. Uh, weathered barnwood or reclaimed wood is a nice touch. It's natural. The weathered look is good element and allows a breakaway from the James Hardy product. All colors and products should be neutral in tone. And this would, uh, will help separate it from the rest of the project, like Chris had said, which separates it from the main street while having some similar elements, yet being very unique. Okay? Um, these are just a couple of my comments. Uh, and I was, like to share them before the meeting so that they, you know, if there was any questions, further questions for me, I can, you know, add input. But overall, those sketches, option one, little higher water table, so it's not covered up. I think it, I think it's, it's there. I mean, you have, you have even shed dormers, I believe, on the roof, which break up that roof line. That's the other thing. We can't have contiguous sections of.
Can you go back to that chart? Hard Howard ton one.
The drawing, yeah. You see there's a little shed, you see those little shed roofs up on, yeah, exactly on both sides. Now those, those might be just lights to light up the up, upper part. I don't know. That's probably a loft up there. Maybe they peek in, maybe, maybe they're lit. Uh, I'm not exactly sure. Maybe they, they run the whole length of the structure or just, just set back off the gable walls. I don't, I don't know how hard, you know, I'm not seeing all the views. But, but in general, that, that's, to me, that's a great feeling. And it would fit and it would still be different. And that's, that's what I like. It, it, it's not something like you walked out and there's Mars. You know, it's like, you know, there, it's something totally different and it doesn't really fit. So.
Thank you, Robert. That was also very clear. Mr. V.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, putting me in the meeting the other day. I think.
Of course.
Larry, you walked away with a lot of information and I believe that option two on your sketch is something that we talked about. The stone in particular, you wanted to pick up, uh, matching the stone a little bit off the hotel.
Yes.
And I think that the water table stone should go up to the second floor. You've got three stories of a house there. I think that would look nice with plantings. And then when you go around that side of it to the back, of course, you're going to, you know, have the fourth story, but you'll have to work on that. Um, this drawing here, it kind of looks like you got a soffit in the front and I'm not a hundred percent sure. I don't think that fascia board is flat. I don't know if there's soffits there, but, uh, that's a look that I particularly like. Um, and then the, the windows in this particular one, not too busy. Uh, and I like the board and batten on the, uh, what you're showing there. So, uh, I think the, uh, uh, stone to match the hotel, I kind of like that idea. Not that we want it to look identical. But I think it should go to the second floor. And then just the soffits and the fascia boards are in question.
Okay.
But you, you walked away from the meeting with the comments that Michael and I had, uh,
Yep.
Bonnie had, had taken. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. That was also very clear. I know that's what applicants are always looking for. And before I have my comments, Ms. Wasser, I think, had a couple of others to add?
Oh, just about the barn, about the sign barn. We didn't really talk about that.
Yeah, okay, we can go back.
Well, it's not, it's not a big problem, but I was curious about the curtain wall because it's not very barn-like to have.
All the glass?
Yeah. So what, uh, what's your vision for that? Why?
We, we, it was eight feet. We made it 10. It was eight feet in the, so, so.
They, they raised, there was a glass wall, a glass dome. They raised it taller.
And we made it 10. And if there's objection to 10, then.
I, I'm just curious about the glass in general.
It's because you're displaying the antique.
Showing the antique.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's what it shows.
Okay, good. Thanks for clarifying that.
But, you know.
Mike? Yes, one other thing. When, when we're talking about the back, so, so there's four floors, right?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's.
So the back stone, stone wall, I agree with what, what the, uh, the contractor and designer said. Yep, yep. What he said that, you know, that will be all, probably be all stone. But, but if you, if you can or lever that back section out a little bit, it would create a shadow line. And that would be a way to break that wall system. And, and when you turn the corners of the structures, uh, which we're not showing, you could, you could make that like a pier that would break that. So, so that half wall that I'm talking about bringing that water table up and not having it full on the front. Cause you don't want, again, you don't want too much stone. I agree. I think this, this, this limestone and stuff feel, it, it, it just makes it a little bit more contemporary and it changes the structure. So that, I just wanted that to be clear that, you know, I haven't seen the back view. I haven't seen the side views.
Yep.
Uh, so I can't really, you know, I mean, I can anticipate what I would do, but not what your thing.
We're, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, now mine. So first, Mr. Abalazi, if I'm saying that correctly, I hope I am.
Yes.
I only meant that we want to welcome you to Hyde Park and work with you.
Thank you.
But one of the statements you made earlier was you just built this stuff that nobody had seen in Duchess County. So, and you want your vision. And I wish your vision had been incorporated in this in the first place, but you weren't here. So for me, being the chair and trying to keep moving things along, I believe always look to just enforce what we have written in the code. This is already adopted. So to me, I can actually live with option one or option two. I think both of them, when they said, I think they're, they're correct. Because I think what you proposed, your initial vision looks, I, I admit it looks nothing like in Duchess County and that's, design vision, page three, reflect the sense of place and strong history of Hyde Park will also encourage you contemporary building and site designs to drop on that heritage and local tradition. Proposing something that doesn't look like anything here seems to go counter to that. Further, in the same proposal, the architecture of Bellofield should respond to the landscape of the Hudson Valley and its multitudinous building traditions. I haven't seen a building tradition that doesn't have any kind of soffit that has that flat, monotonous look. I mean, as part of our tradition. I think if you go around places, you can find it. Um, but I'm not sure it belongs in here because it doesn't match the guidelines to me, which is why I like option one or two. I leave it to people who are more expert than me about the height of the stone table, but, um, Larry was the one I think who initially mentioned that and I do think it helps marry this in. Even though it can be different and not look like everything else is proposed, it still would incorporate some of the elements that you will find throughout the site and also to the hotel. I also want to have my colleagues envision for a moment. If you're standing here looking at the front of this, what are you going to see? Not just that, you're going to see the rest of the hotel, a five-story hotel that rises up behind you. That hotel, I've also pointed out that I wish that we'd not approve the, honestly, the architect that we approved because I don't think it matches the rest of the site. But at the time, you didn't really have a design for the rest of the site. So we went with, I think the term I used was creating a visual echo, a gateway, so it matches the CIA in, both in height and kind of overall look. It's a beautiful look. It's just, it's a little bit different now from what the rest of, what we approved was. So I just keep looking back to what, again, what we approved and I don't think that your original vision is reflected in there. I personally don't find the mulligan windows busy, but I also like option two with the less busy windows. I'm pretty game and agreeable, in other words. I just think that you have to, for that matter, if you could do, if you did something that where you use board and batten and then a smooth surface, smooth surface board and batten or smooth, put through board and battens, there are ways to also break up the look if you wanted not to have the same thing on the same facade each time, because you've got four, four and four. You could do combinations. Um, but I think that options one and two got us much closer, much, much closer to the design guidelines, which is why I gave you the heads up. And I think you've heard that from at least four people tonight. That's basically it because I, architecture was the only big thing that I could sort of, that left out of me. And it's my job always to try to say, let's look at the, what we might roadblocks in advance and try to solve them ahead of time. So that was the purpose of tonight because actually we, we're treating this as a pre-application meeting because Tad hasn't weighed in on the completeness of it and it's not supposed to come to us yet. But I know it's important to get dialogue back to you. So that's why we're trying to get very clear dialogue. And I do want to work with you. I promise. So I was saying, maybe you do two that are more flat surface. But, um, I also think that the simpler window accomplishes what you want it to be, but also what was in the design guidelines because that more simple, uh, mullion was included throughout the design guidelines as well. So it's, the other things I have, which are, you have generators shown or spaces for generators, but you should show the typical spec, you know, in the plans, what it's going to look like, et cetera. Um, are these going to be fed by tanks, I take it, or?
Gas.
So gas utility lines. So we need to see the utility lines. I didn't, I couldn't see them on the plan.
One generator per building?
Yes.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about it. It'll have its own meter, you know, paid by the HOA, uh, yeah, HOA.
You should look at the landscaping where it's around the mailboxes.
Okay.
It looks like it might be too close. Um, and then I, when we first saw the parking area, the school bus parking area, I thought that we didn't, that that was gone. But I think it is in the final development plan, but there's no school bus stop shown because there can't be a structure. So there's not supposed to be structures or buildings within the setback. But I guess the question is, is a parking area isn't a structure or a building. So I think it's okay.
What sets all our utility?
I want to resolve that.
All our utility lines go right up there. We can't put anything on there other than a sidewalk.
That's what I thought. So, um, basically that's it for me. And I'm, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Abalazi, that you, or Mike, that you spent all that time with all those people. I have to be honest, I really dislike the reclaimed wood. I thought it really was, that was even more monotonous to me. But that's just personal. Again, and I'm only one vote. I mean, the goal up here is to get 7-0. But if you only get 4-3, that's what you go for. I count votes all the time. So that's, that's what I know. I also, I think that both Don's and Rob's suggestion about creating a some sort of soffit, because it just, that, that's a little just more traditional with Hudson Valley architecture. And like Rob said, it doesn't have to be huge. But if you're going to do a smooth front with say a stone base, then adding that soffit gives it that visual interest, I think. Uh, but overall, I, I did like what you proposed in terms of those, um, the decks and the movement upstairs to the roof, because you're right. No one's going to hang out in the front lawn. You're not going to have one either. There is, you know, there are some amenities that will be there ultimately, the clubhouse and gym and all that the people can go to at first. And this will be built first, you're going to need to kind of do something on your own and you provided that. So what we're talking really about is the exterior cladding, basically, and the windows. And everything's a box in my world. You can change the cladding any way you want to. Uh, but it needs to change. It needs to incorporate basically what's, what was approved. I don't think that it has to look like everything else that's in there because I think we added enough variations um, that you could make changes, the width of the wood, width of something. Again, I'm not an architect. I know what I like, but, and that's just personal. This isn't about what we like. It's really, to me, about adhering to guidelines. That's all. So.
Okay.
Anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure to meet you. Do you live nearby, by the way? You doing a lot of business here now?
No, I live in, uh, Bergen County, Silver.
You have a schlep up. Sorry.
Sorry?
I said you have a schlep up today and a schlep back.
Well, it's in the middle. So I, I've worked in the city, so for, for like many, many years. So I was like in the middle. So I was always like close to Westchester, close to the city.
Next time you're here, we'll try to schedule it earlier so you don't have to drive back in the dark, as I made it, so.
Thank you.
Of course. Any other comments?
No, I was just going to make a comment that I grew up in Mawa, so, uh, I could drive you home sometime.
Thank you.
It's a full-service planning board up here. So.
Thank you very much.
Um, you're going to make some changes?
Yes.
And then Tad will go through her review to make sure that it's a complete package?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, Michael, I think from the planning board's perspective. regardless of who said something, all of those little changes are what start to create that fine grain articulation, so things don't seem, you know, flat. So you'll, I guess, do a couple renderings maybe, or?
Yeah, we'll come back in two weeks, right?
Yeah, it's, well, if you can get us materials, yes.
Yes.
Because we're not in a public area right now. I know. But I mean, the reason why I say this too is because you didn't hear any comments about the layout or anything else.
Right, layout's good.
So it's just the architecture that we need to get through. That's why the fastest we can get it through, I think, is to not keep discussing, is to just keep incorporating.
Elevator, okay, inside, because we have elevators.
We know you have elevators.
Sorry?
We've known you had elevators all along.
Okay.
And I think these buildings have to be sprinkled as well.
It will be modern, modern design interior.
You know what? As, as long as it matches this, I don't care what it looks like on the inside. There can be no molding. I don't, that's, that's for you.
Definitely will be no moldings.
I've never wanted to live in a mid-century modern look, but I've helped decorate them before. Love the way it looks. Do you know Evenson Best, the company?
Which one?
Evenson Best? The largest dealers of Noel furniture in the world. That's why.
I did, I worked on my last few projects before COVID was, uh, we were, I was doing the private galleries on Upper East Side. So I did, I did like a handful of them. And my last one was actually a landmark building. It was owned by Queen Sophia. She donated to the Spanish Institute, so then we, we got it. And then we did a beautiful job on it. It's a very unique building. Next door, we have Italian Embassy and American Institute.
Shoot me the address when I'm at my place in the city next time. I'll be on.
Sure.
And by the way, I live in traditional Sutton Place. Sorry, we don't have our.
No, no. So, so basically, what we, we capped, so I get your comments, and we're going to work on it. But, you know, it reminds me like New York City Board when we were going this approval, so they don't let me do anything exterior, but.
The interior.
Yeah, so we pretty much like, uh, did the renovation, then we capped the, the unique building, and we went to the modern, but it's a very, very classic building, and.
I look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, and then, you know, hopefully I can do something similar with that, and, you know, hopefully surprise you guys when I come here next time.
The wow factor for you. Thank you.
We're going to leave, I don't know about soffits and garters outside, but it's definitely going to be like what you're looking for.
Yeah, we're, I mean, I don't think we can get anything to you until early next week.
No, yeah. It's going to take me a.
Yeah.
Do you want us to put you on for August the 16th, though, instead of, is it 16th?
It's going to rain all weekend.
Or you're going to town the second?
Yeah, just wait till we get it.
It's going to rain all weekend. You can work.
Let's push, sorry?
It's going to rain all weekend. You can work.
Yeah, right. But it's, it's just going to be sketches, you know.
Let's wait until you submit, and then we'll schedule.
When we need to have the submissions.
Well, technically, for the next week in August, it will be tomorrow.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, yesterday.
Yes, so, so we don't, we don't have a chance. I don't care how many guys you have.
In other words, take, take, take the extra time, and let's just put it on, but when you see it, when you submit it, we'll schedule you. So when you submit it, we'll schedule it.
Okay, very good.
That's going to be easier.
Okay.
Thank you very much. A pleasure to meet you. See you again. Can we take a quick five-minute break? Everyone's up here, been here for three hours. I promise, Peter, we'll get to you next. It's not going to take long. We got the resolution ready to go. We're back in session. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to consider an approval resolution for Camp Victory Lake's master plan and Phase One church. You don't have to set it all up if you don't want to.
I got it. It's part of the gig.
Did you bring any champagne or anything?
You know, it's in the car for myself, Pete.
Well, I'm going to be leaving right after.
Well, you, we, we can, you know, same name. It's, it's meant for Pete, so.
You know, if we withhold the vote, you can keep coming back, because we love your smile.
Listen, I'll be back for other stuff. Don't you worry. Promise?
Yeah, of course. For you guys, of course.
Want to say anything?
I mean, Peter Sander. I got to do the spiel, I guess. Peter Sander here, representing the applicant Northeastern Conference, Seven Day Venice, here for Camp Victory Lake, the 47,000-square-foot religious sanctuary that I've been presenting in front of you guys since I was in professional diapers, I guess.
Got to take, got to take them huggies off.
Yeah, listen, after that, like two and a half hours, they're full.
You're a big kid now.
Yeah, I'm a big boy now. That's, that's like. But anyways, so, yeah, so since our last submission, we had addressed all the comments. I reviewed Pete's letter. I reviewed Bonnie's letter. Very minor comments. Very comfortable having those addressed in the resolution. And that's essentially it on my part. I'm looking forward to your part.
Well, we're going to start that right now, unless anybody else has any comments. Mr. Oliver, Vice Chair Oliver.
Actually, I actually do have a comment. It's a lot, it's a lot of fun.
Here we go, here we go.
Seeing all the different personalities we go through in one evening. All right. Resolution granting conditional site plan approval and special use permit Camp Victory Phase One Religious Sanctuary, resolution number 2018-66B, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board has considered the special use permit standard set forth in 108-8.4A of the zoning law and makes the following findings. One, the project will comply with the applicable requirements contained in Article 5 and 5 of the zoning law and is consistent with the purposes of the Green Belt District. Two, the project will be consistent with the purposes of the zoning law as set forth in 108-1.4. Number three, the project will not result in excessive off-premise noise, dust, odors, solid waste, or glare, or create any public or private nuisances. Four, the project will not cause significant traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overload existing roads, considering their current width, surfacing condition, and any other proposed improvements made to them by the applicant. Five, the project will be suitable for the proposed action, considering the property's size, location, topography, vegetation, soils, natural habitat, hydrology, hydrogeology, and if appropriate, its ability to be buffered or screened from neighboring properties and public roads. Six, the project will be subject to such conditions on operation, design, and layout and structures, layout of structures, and provision of buffer areas as may be necessary to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses and to protect the natural, historic, and scenic resources of the town. Be it further resolved, the planning board hereby grants the applicant a special use permit for a camp and religious use as shown on the site plan set and approves the site plan set for Phase One and authorizes the chair or his authorized designated sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, approval of the SWIP by the town engineer and town stormwater officer. Three, approval by the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health for the methods of water supply and sewage disposal. Four, approval by the Dutchess County Department of Public Works for the curb cut. Five, revision of the site plan set, site plan sheet six of 24 to include a note stating that installation of dry hydrant shall be coordinated with the inspected, with and inspected by the Roosevelt Fire Department. Six, revision of sheet eight of 24 to depict all roof leaders and approval by the town engineer of the drawing shown on the sheet. Seven.
Drainage.
Wow. Seven, revision of the site plan set to include a 12-foot-wide footpath to the new cabins. Eight, revision of the site plan sheet 14 of 24 to correct the Norway spruce, white pine, or white spruce inconsistency. Nine, revision of the site plan sheet 14 of 24 to include the following note. A no-mo zone in established, is established extending 30 feet from the lake. The no-mo zone shall be protected during and after construction by the placement of boulders to demarcate the zone. Ten, revision of the site plan sheet zero to include the SMA sheets.
Second.
Any further discussion? Congratulations. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. And then you all say no. Well, surprise. Well, now that this, I just wanted to say, thank you guys for working with me for so long on this. You know, I really started out as just a wee lad when I first started this project. And, you know, it's, it's really nice to work with a board that actually does provide feedback and does provide comments and gets excited about projects, because I've worked at a lot of boards. They don't all do that. This is a board apart. So I just really wanted to say thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Happy day. Top was worthy, but.
I hope your client is appreciative.
I, they're, they're very thrilled about this. I was talking to them. They're excited, and they're just waiting for my phone call, so. So then, yeah, we'll put on speaker.
Well, you got paid by the hour, right?
No.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
We really look forward to working with you again. You know that, because every time we'd say, he's so enthusiastic and nice. We just, I more like him.
It's a monster, I downed right before I got in, so.
Get some more projects for us.
Thank you, thank you.
That was it.
Oh, did I sign this now?
Thank you, Peter.
So with everyone's forbearance, I'm going to change the agenda real quickly, because we only have one group left, and we have two resolutions prepared for them. These are both site plan waivers, but since they've been here so long, I thought we would invite them up, come up, and, you know, if they can at least discuss and tell us what's going on. So this is the old Village Antiques building. They're proposing change of uses and lots of different things. I just thought it'd be nice for anybody who's left watching us, who hasn't gone to sleep.
Good evening, board.
Good night, everybody.
My name is Andre Pimienta, and this is Debbie Eckwald. And Debbie's mom had Village Antiques for about 30 years.
Wow.
And a couple of years ago, when COVID hit, she had taken ill. And of course, as you know, a lot of businesses had shut down at that point, and we took over the business. And we tried keeping the antique business going for two years. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of desire or interest in antiques, so the business, we decided, could not stay open. We were just losing too much revenue each year. So at that point, we decided we wanted to keep the building and do something else with it. So we came up with a plan, excuse me, to bring some other businesses in. And those four businesses are, are a solar company. Hope you don't mind, Don. And we propose also a hair salon and a production studio, Q29. And we're going to do an Airbnb in the front of the building in the old house part. So we are here for a change of use, and I think we have some resolutions.
We do, and these have no conditions, because we're waiving. So how fast you can get the salon owner, and I would just speak to Ms. Moss, because, again, we're waving, because you've met everything. I also want to just point out to everybody that the Airbnb is restricted to, I think, one bedroom, just because of aesthetic capacity. But otherwise, everything fit with, and we worked well with Mr. T. Thank heavens, he told us everything, and the applicant has spoken to him, so. Anyway, it's exciting to have, where one business was, four now, to me at least. That's why I want you to sit, to get up here and talk about it. So Ms. Wa, anybody have any questions or comments for the applicants? Okay, Ms. Wasser.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about renovations. Like, when is this all happening?
Well.
I mean, you're ready.
We are ready. Most of the renovations that took place were really all cosmetic. You know, once we got the antiques out, the building is beautifully designed, actually, to accept four businesses because of the way the doors are set up and the way the building is structured. It was perfect for us. So we are ready.
Your hanging baskets look beautiful, by the way.
Thank you.
I mean, stunning.
Thank you. Deb is definitely the gardener, and we took out some of the shrubs that have been there for 30-plus years and made improvements, and will continue to do so.
Looking much better.
That's great.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, site plan waiver. July 19th, 2023, resolution number 2023-42. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by owners Andre Pimienta and Deborah Eckwald for the addition of three mini-split heat pumps. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the file entitled APDE Properties LLC for installation of heat pumps regarding the specific waiver request dated February 9th, 2023, associated with the building permit application dated January 13th, 2023.
It's been a while.
Is there a second?
Uh, second, sorry.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Any nays or abstentions?
No.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and the next one, resolution, site plan waiver, resolution 2023-43. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by owners Andre Pimienta and Deborah Eckwald for a change of use from retail antique sales and storage to, one, returning the front building, a former residence, to a one-bedroom Airbnb rental; two, converting the large two-story central building, formerly storage, into two offices, each with a maximum of two employees on site at any time; and three, converting the rear building from garage storage to a one-seat, one-sink hair salon. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the file entitled APDE Properties LLC for changes in use from retail sales of antiques and storage to a one-chair, one-sink hair salon, two offices with a maximum number of employees as established by the DCDBCH, and a one-bedroom Airbnb regarding the specific waiver request dated February 10th, 2023, as revised April 21st, 2023. Now I know why it's not in caps and bold. And July 11th, 2023, associated with the building permit application dated January 13th, 2023.
Second, the motion.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. But I, I do have one question for our, our future tenant for the hair salon. Could you explain to us what is next in order to have that business open and operational?
I don't know. I don't know that there's a, I think you put a building permit application in for the change of use. So, you know, I think you need to close out your building permit. I'll be able to sign off on it now, and you'll need to close it out. And then, you know, we don't, we don't do a business registration.
Yeah, we don't, once we waived it. So we can open.
I don't know about the Department of Health.
Oh.
Well, we answer to the Department of State. There you go. We are licensed and we answer to the Department of State. There you go. Yes.
So, but in other words, we've waived it, so.
So we're.
I think, I think as Tad said, you may, you may need to close your building permit out.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. As far as I can see. Consider it closed out.
Existing, Michael.
Yeah, using the existing, existing sector.
And, you know, we, we expect that you put things from swing gate up, and we expect that all of those things will happen. And you'll need a signed permit when you.
Correct. Right. We haven't forgotten.
That's different. So, but I think if you can close the building permit out as fast as you can, then.
Okay.
So I don't know what's required to do that.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak with.
And you don't need a sign to operate either.
They can start operating and then work through that.
Okay. They're ready. Thank you.
I'm sure we know.
Yeah.
So, anyway, good luck with that.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate it.
Thank you for staying here all night and hearing all of those projects.
It was interesting. Good evening.
Good night. Have a good night.
Okay, now we're going to go back to the rest of the agenda.
One more applicant for Wise out there.
What? Is this?
There's one more.
Oh!
Oh, they're here?
That's right.
I came, even though I didn't have to. Hawaii.
Okay, I have that one, too.
Here. That's Mr. Waters. Mr. Waters.
Yep.
She must be putting in for overtime.
Bye. Yup.
Wait, you're not David or Liz Wise?
No. I work the solar division at Vif electric. So.
Got you.
You are the VV.
So we have, this is, this is a request for site plan waiver to install roof, yeah, Don's recused. Roof-mounted photovoltaic panels at 41 Horseshoe Drive. It is not directly visible from either one of the historic sites or the river. And we have the recommendation from Ms. Moss for the waiver. Anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
And let's go. Mr. Waters.
Site, site plan waiver, July 19th, 2023, 2023, resolution 2023-40. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to, to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by David and Elizabeth Wise to install roof-mounted photovoltaic panels on the existing single-family home. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the request for a waiver of site plan received by the planning department on June 27th, 2023. 2023, and in the building permit application dated June 8th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? There is one recusal, so one abstains. And thank you.
Now, can I just ask a question?
Of course.
I have my experience moving forward. Why did it have to go through the planning board when it's a rooftop?
Because anything that requires a building permit that changes the exterior under our code requires planning board review.
So that's a Hyde Park rule.
Well, no, it's also, you're in, you're in an overlay district, I should have added. I'm sorry, you're in a statewide area of scenic significance.
Okay.
So like if you wanted to put something on an area that's not in a SAS, as it's called, it wouldn't require our review, but for changes to the exterior when it's in this district, it requires our.
Okay, because see, I looked at the zoning map and I was like, all right, it's outside the historic.
No, it's, it's an overlay.
Okay.
I believe there's also different categories in the solar law that establish the rooftop, the freestanding, and the commercial.
Yep.
And they're treated separately. So the freestanding would require.
Our review.
Site plan approval as opposed to just a waiver of site plan for the rooftop.
Okay. I just want to know for moving forward because we're gonna plan on something more and I want to make sure.
The SAS, as it's called, it's set by the state.
Okay.
And that's how the boundaries were defined. And basically, it covers anything from the FDR State all the way north, a long way, now that I think about it, almost to the border of Rhinebeck, because you have the different, like Mid-Hudson Shoreline District.
Right, they, they.
They overlap.
Yeah.
So basically, it's almost anything west of the.
On this side, though, not necessarily 9G or anything like that.
No, areas, areas around Val Kil are in SASs. It's been on. And then there's also sometimes, there's, depends on what, what residence you're putting it on, basically, I shouldn't add here, because, you know, we have townhouses that also, multi-family requires site plan review. So if it goes on several townhouses, then it has to go through site plan review as well.
Okay. Yeah, just for planning purposes, so I know once I put it in, how much I can plan out before we can actually install.
Just call.
I was gonna say, if you have a pre-app meeting, pre-application meeting, we can go through.
There's, there's also a map that, in the comp plan, that outlines where the overlay districts are.
Okay.
That's right, there is.
So if we can.
I can take a look at that.
I believe it's on the website, but if it's not, I can send it to you.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, call Don.
I don't know, it's Don. Thank you for coming out.
I'm never there.
Next item on the agenda, the Coalition of America, they're proposing a site plan amendment, as you've all seen, for new gates, very elaborate but gorgeous gates, look that they were drawn by Mr. Waters, in my opinion. They had to go for variances for height and the number of signs, the ZBA granted them. So now we need to set a public hearing to do the site plan amendment. So Megan, a motion to set the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
For August 2nd, by the way. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is another site plan waiver. This is for the expansion of a garage that's also in the statewide area of scenic significance. This is located at 20 Parker Avenue and as always, it's not directly visible from the historic sites or the river. And we have the recommendation from Ms. Moss. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay. Ms. Waller, we did a lot for you tonight, sorry.
Just those crazy dates. Okay, resolution 2023-31, Benjamin and Jennifer Siegel, 20 Parker Avenue, site plan waiver. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Benjamin and Jennifer Siegel on April 11th, 2023, for property located at 20 Parker Avenue in the Town of Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the file entitled Siegel.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Salmon of Knowledge books. Anybody want to know what the salmon, what the salmon of knowledge was?
Yeah, what, what is that?
It's, it's a part of Irish lore and history that there was a salmon that contained all the knowledge in the world and there were two, there was a guy wanting to fish for it, that if he ate it, he would have all the knowledge in the world. And the story goes on that he didn't eat the whole thing, somebody had parts of it, et cetera, but it's basically going back to old Gaelic history. And if you look at the sign, it has a symbol that looks old in Gaelic, so. But it's also, I just want to point out that this is actually a bookstore that we're.
It's wonderful.
And it's great to have a bookstore in Hyde Park again. So I believe this resolution is Mr. Bees.
Yes, resolution recommending granting of site, of sign permit, salmon of knowledge books, 4158 Albany Post Road, date July 19th, 2023, resolution 2023-39. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board recommends approval of sign permits for salmon of knowledge books, freestanding sign be granted.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Dutchess County SPCA. The applicants receive a site plan waiver for kennel replacement. We have Ms. Moss's recommendation. These are actually replacing the intact, the dog kennels that exist, it's the same footprint. It will house less animals, have higher ceilings, so it's still humanely treating the dogs. Anybody have any other questions?
I had one question.
Yep.
Does, does it have any ventilation up high or?
Yes.
Are those windows operable?
I, I believe so, and there may, there may be HVAC associated with it, I'm not sure.
They don't have now. Okay. I just wasn't sure when I looked at it.
No, there is ventilation.
There is ventilation.
Yes.
Okay. And this resolution is, will we read by Mr. Oliver?
Yep.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Dutchess County SPCA, resolution number 2023-41. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by the Executive Director Lynn Mellicarow, granting authorization for Tony Pagano and John Stork and George Slanovich to represent the Dutchess County SPCA for all permits, applications, and any other processes, process required for the demolition and construction of kennels and renovation of the clinic space at the facility. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the file entitled Dutchess County SPCA. Changes to the kennel portion of the intake facility regarding the specific request dated June 10th, 2023, and plans by John M. Stork, R.A., last amended July 14th, 2023, with an update to lighting that is now dark sky compliant, and be it further resolved that any changes to the plans approved herein as a result of the building permit review will require, will be required to return to the planning board for revision.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Degroot Teed. This is a site plan waiver to approve replacement windows. It is also in the SAS. We have the recommendation from Ms. Moss and this is, again, not readily visible from either historic side of the river.
Degroot Teed, 20 Rogers Place, July 18th, 2023, resolution 2023-45. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Kerry Degroot Teed to replace two second-story windows of the same size on the existing single-family home. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the, in the request for a waiver of site plan received by the planning department on July 18th, 2023, and in the building permit application dated July 6th, 2023.
Can we get a second?
Second.
A universal second.
I got it.
You got it. You got it, Don.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Before we adjourn, I just want to share that Mr. Abuladze came up to us when we'd had the break and told me that we were great, that we were the smartest planning board you'd ever dealt with.
Oh, my God.
And that most people up here don't pay attention or really make comments. And he appreciated us being very direct. So I want to thank, thank all my colleagues for that because that's pretty high praise.
We got a lot of praise tonight.
I know, but that's, that's, that's really, it was great to hear.
Bratty points are gonna get him nowhere then.
No, he said.
He's in for a fight.
He said, I understand exactly what you're looking for now. He said, I didn't understand that before, but he understood it.
He's passionate, he's very passionate.
Yeah. So, at any rate, Megan, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you, Town Board, for providing the resources to televise us as always. Thank you, Tony.